Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I will call this City Council Business Meeting to order. Tonight is Monday, December 18th, 2023, our last City Council meeting of the year. Thank you all for being here in the council chambers. Thanks to everybody who's watching at home. We will start our meeting as we always do. If you're able, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, thanks for joining us this evening. Our agenda this evening includes item 2.1, which is some recognition for Councilmember Martin. This is his last council meeting and will recognize his service to the city of Bloomington. Under our consent agenda, Councilmember Carter has the consent agenda this evening, and it's a hefty one, 24 items on tonight's consent agenda. As we move to hearings, resolutions, and ordinances, we have five public hearings this evening and one opportunity for a public comment, and that would be on item 4.6, our Act of Transportation Plan adoption. The public hearings we'll be holding, item 4.1 will be regarding the Capital Improvement Plan. 4.2, the Northern Elite All-Stars Change in Condition. Item 4.3, building expansion at 9,200 Old Cedar Avenue. We will have a public hearing regarding 700 American Boulevard, the rezoning and the PDP and the FDP. And the public hearing on 4.5 is our miscellaneous issues ordinances for 2023, an annual event that we have every year where we look at our ordinances and look for ways to update, improve, or edit them in some way. So those are our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances for the evening. Item 5 is our organizational business. Item 5.1, we will provide a summary of the City Manager Performance Evaluation and Employment Agreement, and we will end our meeting with item 5.2, the City Council Policy and Issue Update. Counsel, any changes or corrections to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, I would move approval of our agenda for this evening. Motion by Councilmember Delisandro, second by Councilmember Martin, to move approval of our agenda this evening. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0, and we have an agenda. As I mentioned, item 2.1, recognition of our Councilmember Patrick Martin, his service to the city of Bloomington. This is his last council meeting. Patrick, I wanted to say thank you very much for your service to the city of Bloomington. It's greatly appreciated. Given your age when you were first elected, I thought you had a chance to break all kinds of longevity records here on the council, but understand your need to step aside. And when you were elected, you were our most recent example of how every vote counts, or more accurately, how every six votes count, or however that worked. I appreciated that you took on your role. You took it on with enthusiasm, and you took it very seriously. And I admire that you took on your role with some admirable empathy. I really do. I appreciated how you spoke clearly and broadly and empathetically for all the residents in District 4. I thought you did that very well. I've always appreciated your quick wit, your thoughtful comments, that you didn't necessarily have to weigh in on every item all the time, which I really do appreciate that. And I really did, I appreciated that, as you didn't weigh in every time, when you did weigh in, you were definitely worth listening to, and appreciated all you had to say. So, thank you. So, again, thanks for your service to the city of Bloomington. I wish you and Sharon the absolute best, and all good travels and success in the next adventure that you're taking on. I have no doubt that the two of you are going to be wildly successful, and wanted to congratulate and thank you so very much for your service to the city. So, thank you. Counsel, anybody else want to weigh in here? Anybody else want to weigh in? If not, Councilmember Martin, anything to say?
Thank you, and I appreciate the round of applause. I got one more whole meeting. I could biff it in the next three hours, but we'll... I guess, just real briefly, I remember walking around that first campaign, going to the Secretary of State and getting the CD of raw data and begging a friend to help me figure out how to turn it into a spreadsheet, and then having 300 printed pages that were blowing all over into people's yards. And the whole time, and watching council meetings and saying, like, holy cow, these folks up at the DAS, these staff presentations that are so on point, like, this feels insurmountable. Like, how do you get there? And then, I'll say, getting there and having the privilege to serve for six years alongside all these folks, and knowing that really it's just seven council members, including the mayor, who are just good people that walked around with clipboards and pencils, talking to neighbors, wanting to do good things. That there is no magic, there is no secret sauce, it's good people wanting to do good work. And I, again, I've been honored to be able to do it alongside of folks that give me a lot of hope and inspiration, that things are going to be okay. And alongside that, I want to say a huge thank you to staff, to, as we're up here, trying to do good work, to take, a lot of times, very vague and sometimes meandering suggestions, and turn them into concrete, actionable plans to make a meaningful difference in the life of the people that we get to serve, to take that ambition and vision and good intentions and turn them into the new park, the street repaired, the lines in the ground, the stuff that gives the community hope that things will be okay, that the world will keep spinning. And I just think, real quick, a great example, that I had a time-of-sale inspection on Friday. I called Building Inspections, they got somebody scheduled, and within 48 hours, he was at my house, he was 40 minutes early. Peter, who's an incredibly nice guy, that pointed out a couple of things that needed to get fixed, guided me through what is a really anxious time, and said, "Don't worry about it, we'll get this buttoned up, it'll be all right." Good luck to you, I'm so excited for you. And to think that there are tens of thousands of those interactions happening every month across the city with such professionalism, I think speaks to how this city is run and operates. And just finally, thank you to the residents of District 4, who, when this kind of schmo showed up at the door with all the papers and the clipboard and said, "What do you think? What are you excited about? What do you dream about? What do you need fixed? Where do you want to go?" Said, "I trust that guy, and I think he should have one of those chairs up at the DAS to get the work done, and I wouldn't be here without that opportunity and their trust." So, again, that's, when you compliment me on brevity, I'm going to go the opposite direction, but I appreciate the opportunity, this means a lot.
And of course, it's not official until I give you a plaque, so you have to... Next up on our agenda this evening is our consent agenda. Councilmember Carter, as I said, has our consent calendar tonight. Councilmember Carter.
All right, so, of course, we'll be holding item 3.1. Do we have any other holds? Last call? All right, so with that, I would move to approve items 3.2 through 3.24.
Got a motion by Councilmember Carter, second by Councilmember Muah, to accept tonight's consent agenda, item 3.2 through 3.24. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Councilmember Carter.
All right, so 3.1 is a resolution to accept donations, and we have several tonight. So we have a donation from Nicholas Tetner in memory of Lawrence Tetner, and then another one by Amy Wendell in memory of Adolf Wendell, and these are both for donations to Duane Golf Course, so very appreciative of that. And then we have several, or a handful here, to the Bloomington Police Department, monetary donations, and then also some dog food, which is always appreciated, at the animal shelter, and then several to public health, so from the United Way, Bundles of Love, and St. David's Center for Child and Family Development. So, really appreciate the donations from community members and community partners, and then would ask staff to write the relevant thank yous, and with that, I will move to approve item 3.1.
Motion by Councilmember Carter, second by Councilmember Muah, to accept item 3.1. The resolution to accept donations is part of our consent agenda. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Thank you, Councilmember Carter. Which leads us right into our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances for the evening. Item 4 on our agenda. Item 4.1 is a public hearing, and this is regarding the approval of our 2024 through 2033 Capital Improvement Plan, our CIP. And Lori Economy Schuler, our Chief Finance Officer here in the city of Bloomington, is going to tee this up for us. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Matt has the slides started for me there. As you mentioned, this is our CIP, our Capital Improvement Plan for 2024 through 2033. It is a 10-year plan. This 10-year Capital Improvement Plan aligns with our mission, thanks, Matt, to cultivate an enduring and remarkable community where people want to be. This plan aligns with our, and will enable the city to build a connected and welcoming community, a healthy community, and a community with equitable economic growth. Is there a specific direction to... Okay. There are just a couple of agenda areas, our purpose and timelines. The CIP's purpose is a planning tool. It is a long-range planning tool. Again, it's 10 years, so we are looking both short-term, what we think the city will do in capital project activities and improvements, and... Now it'll work? Okay, thank you. Again, so it's a planning tool, and it is not an authorization to move forward until the council has all the funding sources. So, right now, it includes a detailed description of projects that are 50,000 or above. All capital projects are listed in the individual budgets, but if they're a project of less than 50,000, it doesn't appear in this document. And then, we have an executive summary at the beginning of the document. It's a 300-page document, and this highlights in each of the categories, projects that are a million dollars or above. And then, as I mentioned earlier, it does not guarantee the project moving forward. All the funding sources normally need to be brought forward, that the revenues, all of their coming in before the expenditures are authorized by the council. So, we work on that as a purpose statement, and then the procurement is under the normal process. So, under our procurement rules, anything under $175,000 is approved by the city manager, anything above will be on a council agenda, just like this evening's agenda, there's a project moving forward. The normal planning occurred with this timeline. Spring and summer of '23, we worked through the document and defined the projects. We brought to the City Council the draft document in October. The Planning Commission provided their resolution that the document is in compliance with our comprehensive plan on November 16th, and tonight, it's the final document, just before you for the public hearing acceptance of the document. And then there were some updates since our October meeting, and one of them was an election for a referendum of a local option sales tax. And so, we changed in the document for the three projects from other sources to local sales tax. And then, the state bonding program piece had not been added in, and we added those in too there. So those, for the Bloomington Forward Projects, that has been updated in this revised document. And then there were several pieces in the parks where there might have been some duplications or where we had looked at some pieces where they might be from charter bonds or park development funds, and we shifted some of those around, depending on the sources and the years on the park projects. And both Ann and Renee are here, if there's questions on that. For bonding information, this is what we look to at least start in 2024, is we would probably have the late spring Bryant and Treppa Charter Bonds before the City Council. We would also have probably sales tax bonds, October, November timeframe, before the City Council for the Bloomington Ice Garden. And we would also have the permanent improvement bonds in the fall for the PIR projects, BNP Projects. So those would be the three bond sales that I would anticipate. And early spring, we'll probably have a conversation about just where the debt's at, and where we're thinking with how the CIP is currently built and how that looks for the council. So, with the approval of this, we kind of take this as a green light, that we can start at least the design and a little bit of the work on some of these projects, so that as we're coming up to the year that they're occurring in, we can be moving at a much quicker pace. So, right now, projects for '24 and '25 are on the green light, and we're moving forward with them. Some of the ones in '24, you kind of green-lighted last year, like the Bryant and Treppa Parks. So, just want to keep the procurement and the processing moving. And that concludes the slides I have for you, so I have, if you have any questions, please let me know, or it's up to the public hearing time.
Thank you. Counsel, we went through this, an extensive presentation and discussion on this back in October, as Ms. Economy Schuler said, but are there any additional questions that have come up since then, as we head into the approval process or the public hearing this evening? All right, I don't see any. Very good, thank you very much. Don't go far in case there are questions that come up. And with that, this is a public hearing, and I will open the public hearing on item 4.1. This is a public hearing regarding the 2024 through 2033 Capital Improvement Plan Approval. Is there anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak to item 4.1 this evening? Mr. Briller, is there anyone on the phone wishing to speak?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I do see one phone number on the roll here, but given that we have five public hearings and a public comment opportunity, we'll find out what item they're wishing to speak on. Caller with the phone number beginning with 952-232, you looking to speak on item 4.1?
I am not, I'm on item 4.3.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Last call for anybody in the council chambers? Counsel, no one coming forward, no one in the, on the phone to speak to 4.1. With that, I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.1. Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Delisandro to close the public hearing on item 4.1. No further council discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0, closing the public hearing. Counsel, any questions? Are there any comments regarding this Capital Improvement Plan? As I said, we had a pretty lengthy discussion in October, reiterating once again that it is indeed a plan, and the plan only moves forward when we're absolutely ready to move forward in terms of timing, in terms of project availability, and most importantly, in terms of the money to do the projects. And so, it's a, it is a plan, nothing there is set in stone, but it kind of guides us and provides us from, provides us some good foundational support when we're looking to apply for grant and the foundational support for this kind of thing, financial information. So, Councilmember Delisandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Probably a question for you, Ms. Economy Schuler. The, are there charter bonds that are, I don't know what the right word is, they're not expiring, they're coming due, are we paying them off, I guess? Like, is there a net addition in terms of the bonds that we might choose to throw out here? I think the 210 million or whatever it was, or do we have some bonds coming that are, you know, that we're paying off that would, like, does this roll in terms of our overall debt load, I guess is what I'm saying? I'm sorry, that's a convoluted question, and I'm curious, makes sense.
Mayor, Councilmember Delisandro, we have a maturities and outstanding debt. The only area that currently has where one is coming on and one is coming on is our PIR bonds, so, because we've had this program since the 90s, and they're all 10-year bonds. So, after 10 years, 11th year, one falls off, and we have another one coming on. So, there's always a net in that category. On the charter bonds, we've only issued a couple of issues, and they're not 10 years old yet, so, but there's maturities and principal payment down every year on that.
Counsel, any additional questions? If there are no questions, Counsel, I would look for action on item 4.1. Councilmember Martin.
Mayor, I'm happy to make the motion.
Councilmember Martin.
I will move that we adopt a resolution approving the city's Capital Improvement Plan for the years '24 through '33.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Loman, to approve the city's Capital Improvement Plan for the years '24 through '23. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much, thank you, Ms. Economy Schuler, and everybody who worked on that Capital Improvement Plan. Moving on to item 4.2, a second public hearing of the evening. This is regarding a change in condition with our friends at Northern Elite All-Stars. And Mr. Centenario was here this evening, good evening and welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. I have a very brief presentation for you tonight. And so, this public hearing for you is related to, it's a highly technical matter, specifically a change of condition of approval. Northern Elite received approval to operate their facility back in 2016, and they're doing very well, and they want to expand. And so, 2000 West 98th is very close to where we're at tonight, and it's been a popular choice for athletic training facilities, very convenient location, I'm assuming that the interior space works very well for this type of use, and there are several of these athletic training facilities within the building. So, what's on screen is the floor plan, and this is what the applicant would like to do. They want to expand about 6,200 square feet into a tenant bay immediately next to where they operate today. So roughly 50% expansion, the two, if, you know, you divide it into three spaces, the right two are where they are operating today, the yellow area is where they want to expand. And so, staff is, we're very supportive of this, we don't see any concerns with expansion, but we do need to ensure that we're following all the appropriate processes. Where am I supposed to put this? You can just sort of answer, please. Thank you. There's an existing condition of approval from 2016, and that is, this use, or this business has to operate in accordance to the floor plan that was approved in 2016. Well, this is the floor plan that was approved in 2016, where we had more concerns about how the overall site would function and operate with several of these athletic training facilities. And while it can get busy sometimes, we haven't observed or heard of any significant problems. And so, there was a parking site that was done years ago, and it seems to have worked out, it working out really well. So if you wouldn't mind advancing that, Matt, thank you. And so, it's very, what we're proposing for you tonight is very simple, we're just asking you to approve a change that allows the planning manager to accept modifications to the floor plan, essentially allowing for the expansion to move forward. One more, Matt? With that, we do have a recommendation for you there.
Thank you, Mr. Centenario. Counsel, any questions of Mr. Centenario this evening on this one? Pretty straightforward, I think. All right, no questions? With that, I will open this public hearing on item 4.2, regarding the change in condition for the Northern Elite All-Stars. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak to item 4.2 this evening? Don't see anyone? Mr. Briller, anyone on the phone?
Mr. Mayor, no one new.
No one new, thank you. Last call for anybody in the council chambers regarding 4.2. Counsel, no one in the chamber is coming forward, no one on the phone wishing to speak to item 4.2, I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing on 4.2.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Carter, second by Councilmember Delisandro to close the public hearing on item 4.2. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Counsel, any questions on this? Councilmember Delisandro?
Just a quick one. With the change that we're making here, does the, do, does this go basically on consent agenda for us to approve at some point, or is it, like, literally, we don't even hear about it anymore?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, this would likely be the last you'd see of this particular application. The applicant has his building permit on standby, waiting for your action, and then you'd probably see some minor construction traffic on site.
Very good. And I will say, this is, I'm glad to see this, I drive past that building often, and it is always full, always full. So, very well done in terms of finding the correct use there and making it worthwhile and useful for a lot of different folks. Councilmember Muah?
Thank you, Mayor. I did have one question. Is there any idea of how long this expansion is going to support the business? Just wondering if it's going to come back to us again, in like, a year or two, and then we'd have to go through this again, so just thinking long-term if we have to, if this is going to fit into the future, or is it going to come back later?
Mayor, councilmembers, that's a great question. The applicant is here, they probably better answered than I could, but in terms of a process, you know, if they want to keep expanding, what we're probably going to have to do is consider a new conditional use permit, and that would go before, there'd be public hearing at the Planning Commission, and we could consider how that expansion relates to traffic and parking needs and some of the other concerns that we might have with a significant expansion.
Good with that, Councilmember Muah? Just the... I think the question is how long before your continued success leads to you outgrowing the facility?
Well, we've been here for...
I'm sorry, if you could just identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Karen Moore, I'm the owner of Northern Elite.
Welcome.
Thank you, and we have been in the facility space for about seven years, and we are at that point where we expanded into this space from Eagan originally, and it took about seven years for us to now kind of outgrow or want to continue to grow where we're at. So, I would love to say, "I'll see you in a year." I doubt that will happen, though, but we utilize the space efficiently, so we can use every corner to make sure it's, you know, successful with the space that we've been given, so. Does that answer? Okay, thank you.
Thank you much. Counsel, additional questions? If not, I would look for action on item 4.2, the change in condition for Northern Elite All-Stars.
Happy to make the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Delisandro?
I will move to adopt a resolution approving a change of condition to allow expansion of an existing sports training facility at 2000 West 98th Street.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Delisandro, second by Councilmember Carter, to approve a change of condition allowing the expansion of an existing sports training facility at 2000 West 98th Street. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Item 4.3 on our agenda is our third public hearing of the evening. This is regarding a building expansion, this is our BP, the BP at 9,200 Old Cedar Avenue. And I believe Liz O'Day from our planning staff is here, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. All right. Yep, thank you. All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 4.3 on your agenda this evening is for a rezoning. Item 4.3 on your agenda this evening is for a rezoning, to apply the planned development overlay district and to convert, and development plans to convert the existing car wash into a retail space, and then expand into a new car wash space and parking lot improvements located at the BP at 9200 Old Cedar Avenue South. So, I'm sure you're all familiar with this intersection. It's a very prominent intersection in Bloomington, at Old Cedar and Old Chocopee. Surrounding land uses include single-family to the east, apartment building to the south, commercial shopping center to the west, and kind of auto, auto-related uses to the north. So, the applicant is proposing to change, oops, hold on, back up. So, this is an image looking at, looking southeast. The existing gas station has a brick exterior, and they aren't planning to change the existing canopy or touch the existing building. Mainly what they're doing is an expansion, as well as some parking lot improvements. So, the base zoning B2 is in proposed to be changed. They are going to plan, going to the planned development overlay district to ask for some development flexibility. So, this is the site plan. The area, expanded area is outlined, outlined in red. This would hold the new car wash, mechanical room, and trash room. When there is an expansion that exceeds 25% or more of the floor area, you have to come into conformance with a number of site characteristics. And those site characteristics include parking, lighting, landscaping, and other items. So, they are required to come into conformance with the multiple of different things here today, and that's why they're coming forward with the planned development overlay. And ultimately, the expansion is 35, or not 35, 1,300 square feet. So, this is the site plan again, and then what they're showing is some deviation requests related to parking lot islands. That is a conformance trigger that they have to come into conformance with. And parking lot islands are required at the ends of each parking row, and they have to be eight feet wide. So, what they're proposing is, let me move this real quick. So, they have to install, code requires the six parking islands circled in red. And what they're proposing to install are the ones shown in blue. And staff is ultimately in favor of the development flexibility request due to investment into a commercial node, as well as coming into conformance with lighting and landscaping, as well as burying of a above-ground propane tank. And this isn't a development flexibility request, it's just a minor revision. But ultimately, they're showing an eight-foot wide sidewalk south of the driveway, but they're not showing it continuing north. So, just a minor tweak that they have to show before the permit. And then another development flexibility request that they're asking for is related to foundation plantings. What the code requires is 50% of foundation, 50% of the facade along the street has to have foundation plantings. And so, on my screen, you can see the areas that are required for foundation plantings in red. And they are, they are not showing any foundation plantings, so they're asking for that development flexibility. And staff is supportive because they're adding a number of new trees on the site. And it is a fairly tight site, so adding foundation plantings may impact sidewalks and drive, uh, drive lanes. And this is the floor plan. Highlighted in blue is the existing car wash. And then, basically, they're shifting it to the yellow space that is the car wash, where the entrance is on the south, and then exit is on the north of the site. So, with car wash uses, noise is a huge factor in our development application. So, they did hire ESI engineering to do a noise study. And the car wash hours of operation are from 7 to 10. So, we are not using the nighttime noise limits, which are more stringent. So, just the daytime noise levels would apply. And so, there, the noise study recommendation ultimately said that with both doors closed, that it does meet the code requirements. If one of the doors are open, it does exceed the noise levels. So, staff is recommending that the doors be closed to comply with the noise. And so, staff is recommending approval. Planning Commission also recommended approval. Adam Peterson, the person that previously spoke, is on the WebEx for any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions of Ms. O'Dea here regarding item 4.3, the expansion of the BP at 9200 Old Cedar Avenue? Councilmember De La Sondro.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Was there any discussion at, at, at Planning Commission or within staff about the, I don't want to say compliance with, or the, the, this as a, as a use compared to what we were trying to do at that intersection from a, you know, a development node perspective? I was just kind of curious if, if the, the use case here, not that, not that we can do anything necessarily about it, but I know that we've been talking about that particular area as a, as an opportunity zone for us from a, both a community development perspective, as well as a, um, you know, I don't know if the port was looking at it, but an economic development area. So, I'm kind of curious if, if that discussion happened? And if so, what, what were the, the discussion items related to how that complies or doesn't comply with what people were thinking about might be there? For, for example, I think we even had an intersection study going on there, right? So, the potential for a roundabout or whatever that was going on. How does that all fit together? If you could help out with that, that'd be great.
I'll try to tackle it, and then if someone from the port or Mike Centenario could help out, we're more familiar with that commercial node study. So, staff didn't have kind of any particular discussion around the commercial node. I will say it to the point of the redesign of the intersection when the roundabout, roundabout study, I think that's pretty far in the future. So, in terms of like, that sidewalk that we're requiring them to expand, that could ultimately change several years down the line. But we thought, the time is now, let's make them expand that sidewalk now, while we have in front of us. But as far as the commercial node aspect, I am not as familiar with that project, and it didn't come up in any kind of our discussions.
I, I see Mr. Centenario lurking, coming forward.
Mayor, just to address the question about Planning Commission specifically, the use as a whole in this location was not a discussion point. Namely, it's an existing use, and the expansion is significant in the sense of like, an aesthetic improvement, but it's not a major change to the use or the characteristics of, of the use. So, it wasn't something that we discussed.
Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you, Mayor. So, then, you know, just kind of looking at this in terms of the, the noise component with the doors closed. And I know we've had conversations about other noise situations across the city. And I understand that there hasn't been a history of, of noise, but I'm just more curious when I ask this question. You know, if they aren't able to get the door closed, and there are noise complaints, what, what's the, what can be done to try to, you know, is there any way to fix that, that issue, if, if there's a problem there with that? And have we had to do that in any other place in the city? You know, given that, you know, where this is located at, and I, I mean, they've had a car wash there for a while, so it's more just a curiosity question, since there were those concerns with the, uh, with the noise, with the doors being closed.
Sure. So, Mayor and Councilmember Lohman, we do have a condition on the application that they have to comply with noise at all times. And so, that is a state requirement. That's where they have, the rules are the, the state has the noise regulations, and if there is a complaint, then our Environmental Health Department would come out and do an inspection, and then we would take action from there. As far as other sites, I know the Tommy's Car Wash is just under construction now, and I'm not aware of any other kind of complaints from other car washes in the city.
Excellent. So, there's a process in place that would be able to rectify any of those situations if they occur. Of course, obviously, they've had one there for a while, so, you know, we would have seen something. But just more of a curiosity for those neighbors that are there. Thank you.
Yep.
And I will say, Councilmember Lohman, I think, I'm sure we've all been in more than one car wash where it doesn't even fire up until the door behind you closes. And so, it's, it's a, it's a good compromise, I think, to maintain a little bit of peace and quiet or manage the noise a little bit better with, with the automation not even beginning until that door is closed, so.
Yeah, I'd be shocked if, if that ever was an issue, but I was just more curious, uh...
Counsel, any additional questions? Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Just two quick questions. One, with the car wash being new, where there, will there be any enhancements in terms of water reclamation, water use, or other environmental factors on this?
Uh, Mayor and Council, that's, I am not aware of anything, but that might be a better question for the applicant. It was on the WebEx.
Okay. And the, the second question, this is a PD, and the reason we had to go with that is because of the deviations that they're requesting?
Correct.
Okay, so they, they won't be able to meet the parking islands, they're modified, they're getting better, but they're not quite theirs, and, uh, public sidewalk will be close, but not completely meeting the requirement?
Sort of, Mayor and Council. So, the two deviations that they're formally requesting are for the foundation plantings along the building, and then the parking islands, and then the related to the sidewalk. That's something that they can fix. They're not asking for a particular deviation, it's just a revision that we need to see before the building permit.
Thank you.
Yep.
And Councilmember Nelson, do we want to get to the applicant to answer the questions? No? No, I don't believe we do. Okay, so, okay, good to know. Thanks. Also, anything else? Hearing none. I will open the public hearing. Thank you, Ms. O'Dea, don't go far. We will open the public hearing on item 4.3, regarding the building expansion at 9200 Old Cedar Avenue, and this is for the preliminary and final development plans. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak to item 4.3 this evening? No one coming forward? Mr. Sable, is there anyone on the phone?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, no one on the line.
Well, I, I believe we didn't, we said we had somebody on 4.3... Oh, next item, I'm sorry, 4.4, my apologies, 4.4. Last call for anybody in the cha, in the chambers. Counsel, no one coming forward, no one on the phone. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.3.
So moved. Second? I'll do the second to Martin's, basically.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Lohman, to close the public hearing on item 4.3. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 6-0, with Councilmember Muah having stepped away for just a moment here. Counsel, any, any questions or, or anything we need to resolve or, or straighten out before we take action on item 4.3? If not, I would look for motion. Councilmember Martin.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I will move that we adopt an ordinance amending the zoning map by rezoning 9200 Old Cedar Avenue South, B2 general commercial to B2 PD general commercial plan development.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Lohman, to adopt the ordinance amending the zoning map by rezoning 9200 Old Cedar Avenue South. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 6-0. Councilmember Martin.
Uh, Mayor, I will move that we approve preliminary and final development plans to convert the existing car wash to retail space, build a new car wash and parking lot improvements at 9200 Old Cedar Avenue, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember De La Sondro, to approve the preliminary and final development plans at, for 9200 Old Cedar Avenue. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 6-0. Thank you very much. And we will move on to 4.4. Ms. O'Dea is still with us for this one. This is our, our fourth public hearing of the evening, and this is regarding the rezoning, the preliminary and final development plans for 700 American Boulevard West. Ms. O'Dea.
Thank you. All right, item 4.4. This is a development proposal for a currently vacant parcel at 700 American Boulevard West, which entails a rezoning to RM100 and preliminary and develop, final development plans for a five-story, 128 senior apartment building with 1,500 square feet of commercial space. So, this is the northwest corner of Lyndale and American Boulevard. Goodwill and Luther Accura are across Lyndale Avenue. REI is to the north, and the REI Bauer Hockey Site shares access with the subject site. And then Top Line Credit Union is to the west. So, this is an image from, from 2003, which you can see the site was previously used as an automotive and industrial use. And then the city acquired both the 900 and 700 American Boulevard properties as part of the expansion for Lyndale and American. And then this site has had multiple rounds of RFPs. The first was for Fraunshue for a medical office development, and then for Hy-Vee for a health market concept. Both concepts ultimately didn't come to fruition. And then before you this evening, last year, Chafford Richardson was chosen as the developer for the site. Existing conditions, images, this is looking northeast, and then it shows the REI access. And then, another view looking at Lyndale Avenue. Just to give you a flavor of what's currently out there today. And then this is an image of the rezoning. They're proposing a rezoning from B2 to RM100 with a planned development overlay. And here is kind of a concept site plan. The development is a five-story, 128 unit with surface parking and one level of underground parking. There is a commercial component, which is roughly 1,500 square feet, which is circled in red, located at the corner of the site. And then, this is a fully affordable development with 25 units at 50% AMI and 102 units at 60% AMI. So, a deviation that is being requested is related to the side yard setback. So, we're looking at the west side of the site along the shared access. Code requires 18 foot 3, where they're showing 10 foot 9. Due to the location of the shared access, the reduced setback has an insignificant impact to the adjacent property. Also, shifting the setback to meet, shifting the setback to meet the required setback could result in a loss of units, which we didn't want to see. And then another deviation is related to the 20-foot landscape yard. Elements permitted within a landscape yard are like landscaping, sidewalks, driveways. And they're currently showing a public plaza, which is, has an eight-foot setback from the property line. And staff is ultimately supportive of this deviation as the plaza really activates the corner with various features and improves walkability. And it's just a nice addition to the corner. This is the landscape plan. Ultimately, the landscaping quantity is in compliant. In fact, they're kind of going above and beyond in the number of shrubs and plantings quantity. And a couple of minor tweaks are needed here, not development flexibility, but they need to show foundation plantings and a couple of trees in the parking islands. And then here is a building rendering looking from the intersection of Lyndale and American. The building materials are a mix of metal panel, fiber cement, glass, and brick. And then you can see the plaza and the retail component facing the corner. And then lastly, regarding parking, the applicant is taking advantage of the OHO reduction, parking reduction incentive. With the reduction, there are required 162 spaces with 165 spaces provided. So, they're not seeking any further reduction of parking. And then, for the record, it's imperative that they manage parking appropriately because there is no on-street parking nearby that is available. So, with that, staff is recommending approval, and the applicants from Chafford Richardson, excuse me, are in the audience tonight.
Thank you very much. Counsel, questions? Councilmember Lohman?
Thanks. So, uh, I just wanted to go back a little bit to that, that deviation with the building side yard setback. And, you know, obviously, we want to do it, so I'm not, I'm not questioning that. But i- in doing that, what's, what's the impact? You know, we, we have this, the standard here, and, and obviously, you know, we're not going to follow that. You know, what's, what's the impact of, of doing something like that?
Uh, Mayor and Council, so the... Mayor and counsel, so the, the side yard setback is, it's a calculation based on the height of the building. I can't remember what it is off the top of my head, but it's 10 feet plus so-and-so inch, inches above a certain height. So that's how we arrived at the eight-foot-three requirement. I know that seems like an odd number, but that's, that's how we arrived at that requirement. The impact, as you can see, there's this light green, I think is a sidewalk, and then this darker green is the, is a landscaping area. So ultimately, it's a kind of a close-ish area between the sidewalk and the building itself, but staff didn't see any kind of true impact, because there is that shared access directly right here, so there's not any kind of impact.
Okay, so now it wouldn't be like a, something else would, would be, be a problem with that, okay. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't any kind of safety, and I assume not, you, the staff wouldn't, wouldn't do that, I'm just, just kind of curious about that, you know, in terms of that. So I, I have a different policy question about that, but it's not appropriate at this time, but, thank you.
Counsel, additional questions? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, can you quickly summarize how this differs from what the original plan was, the RFP plan?
Um, I might need to call on someone who's more familiar with the RFP, but ultimately, Mayor and counsel, the original plan did not call for age restricted. This is senior apartments, as well as the previous pro, proposal called for more units. This is 128. I think they're looking at doing like 150 some units, and then it was also slightly taller, one story taller.
Do we have information in regards to how many units would have been affordable at different levels in the original RFP?
I do not, but I'm sure the applicant would have that information.
And then is there a change?
If I could, I couldn't, maybe, I know that Mr. Markergard is online, maybe we could bring Mr. Markergard in to answer some of the RFP questions, because I think he worked more closely on them.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, that'd be great.
It's good evening, Mayor Bussey, councilmembers.
I don't know if you, if you heard the discussion or not, Councilmember Nelson had a couple of questions regarding how this, how the, the, the final development plan differs from the original RFP that was set out. If you could just summarize that, that would be helpful.
Sure, yeah, I, I believe Ms. O'Dea covered most of the items. One other differentiation was the reduction in the commercial space. I'm not sure if that was mentioned, 5,000 square feet down to 1,500 square feet. In terms of the affordability, I believe it was 100% affordable originally, so that is not an amendment. Terms of the details on number of units, I'd have to look back on that or, or refer to the applicant.
Councilmember Nelson, any additional questions?
No, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thanks for chiming in, Mr. Markergard, appreciate it. Anything else, counsel? You said the applicant was here, did they, was there anything to add from the applicant? Or, yeah, please. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Katie Anthony, Vice President of Development with Chafford Richardson. Our office is located in Minneapolis, Minnesota. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council for your time today, and thank you to Ms. O'Dea on her presentation. The one thing I wanted to touch on is exactly what Councilmember Nelson brought up. I think you've seen this proposal a couple of times in the last year. One was with regards to the initial RFP, as well as our application for a resolution for housing conduit bonds for the affordability aspect of it. As Councilmember Nelson observed, there are changes in this proposal from what you approved and signed off on about a year ago, and I want to walk through how we got to that point. So the original proposal was for 153 units. It was a six-story building with underground parking, as well as some surface parking. We had proposed 118 parking stalls and a mix of one-through-three-bedroom units. So today, you have 128 units, a five-story building with an expanded level of underground parking and surface parking, for a total of 165 parking stalls, and I want to touch specifically on that, so, and then the commercial space reduction from 5,000 to 1,500 square feet. As we started working with, with the city departments and with the Port Authority on our original plan, as well as some of the members of the Public Works Department, it became clear that parking would really drive the ultimate site plan here. And when we put together our original proposal, we did observe that what we had proposed did not follow to the letter of the zoning code what could be done on the site. We have developed hundreds of units, thousands of units of housing, hundreds of units of affordable housing, and based on our observations and our data on, on parking specifically, put together a proposal with the original RFP that, that we felt was, was sufficient from a parking perspective for the housing count. Through close work with the, with the city, a parking study that ensued as part of the requirements, it became clear that, that the site would not support, would not support that number of units and be able to provide the parking needed to meet the city's requirements. And so that's how we kind of scaled back the plan to something that would meet, would fall within what the city requires for parking, and, and still maximize the number of units that we could get on the site. Likewise, the, the change from, from family housing and a little bit of the unit mix was driven by that parking, that parking study as well, so trying to maintain some density on the site, maintain the number of units, the maximum number of units that, that the site could hold, as well as kind of balancing that parking requirement. That is how we ended up at the, the proposal that you see in front of you today. Our original proposal as part of the RFP had a parking ratio of .77 per unit. This proposal, and, and in this proposal, we are taking advantage of, of the city's opportunity housing ordinance and the parking reduction that comes from that. With the, with the parking reduction, with the OHO, granted because of the affordability on the property, we're at a 1.29 parking stalls per unit ratio. The zoning code without the OHO would require 1.5 parking stalls per unit. So you can see that many iterations and really close work with, with the city staff and the port to get to the point where we are today. A few of the key goals that were outlined in the RFP that we, we used as our, our guidelines for today's proposal include a mix of uses, so both residential and commercial in, in the Lyndale Avenue retrofit plan area, a desire for a diverse, walkable, and compact development, affordable housing being a, an important driver for the city-owned site, and activating the corner. And so there is a lot of push and pull to get where we are today. That is why this proposal is different from what you saw a year ago. It is the same as what you saw with the housing conduit bond proposal that we ran through a, a month or so ago. And we're really excited about this development. We've been wanting to do work in the city of Bloomington for a while. We know the site has its challenges, as evidenced by the history of, of redevelopment and the proposals that haven't happened. We think that adding housing to the site will be important to find that diversified mix in this area. There is a lot of commercial, there is some housing that's come in. It's a nice segue from kind of stepping down from the commercial area into more, some lower-density residential as you move further south, and we're just excited to be here. I'm happy to take questions, I'm not sure if that's appropriate right now, but happy to answer any questions that, that you all have for us.
I think that's appropriate to consider questions. Counsel, any questions of, of Ms. Anthony this evening? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. If there was greater flexibility on the parking, could you get more units in there? And do you think it would work?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mua?
Thank you. I'd like to better understand how you, the commercial space went from 5,000 down to 1,500.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Mua, and the council, yes. So the reduction of density and kind of reworking the economics of the site, we needed to scale back the, the commercial space as well. Ground floor retail and new construction is challenge, has its challenges in terms of finding occupants for that space. In addition to that, the financing sources for affordable housing find commercial space challenging, so it's, it's a push and pull in terms of kind of the economics of what drives, so how much of, of your, your revenue comes from housing versus how much of your revenue comes from commercial space, and what the investors for affordable housing like to see. And so kind of, it's, it's a combination of things. One is kind of the, the scale of, of residential compared to the scale of commercial space, and also just the, the kind of inherent need to scale down the space in order to maximize the number of units that we could get.
Any additional questions? All right. Well, thank you. Thank you for the information, and thanks for being with us this evening.
Thank you.
Stick around in case there's additional questions here. Very good. Counsel, if there's no additional questions, I'm going to open the public hearing. This will be our public hearing on item 4.4, which is for 700 American Boulevard West. This is for the rezoning, the preliminary, and the final development plan. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak to item 4.4 this evening? Good evening. If you could, please identify yourself for the record, and we do, within our public hearings, we've got a five-minute limit per speaker. We have a shot clock on the walls to keep track of things, and when we get to the five minutes, I'm afraid I will cut you off, not because I'm mean, but because we want to make sure that everybody gets the same amount of time and we're, we're equitable to everyone, so.
It's all good.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Kim Nelson with North Central State's Regional Council of Carpenters. We represent 28,000 construction workers in the upper Midwest, many who live right here in Bloomington. Y'all know we love economic development, and we love building things. However, we, we have to keep the workers in mind as we do so. And so I'm here tonight to highlight a few things.
If you could, if you could lower the mic just a little bit to make sure that we pick you up perfectly. Thank you so much.
So I'm here to, to highlight a few, few concerns that we have. Y'all know our staff has tracked in detail for over eight years now in the Twin Cities area, the construction industry. We chat, track developers, general contractors, their primary subs, subcontractors, labor brokers, workers, and other associates, and anything related to a construction site in the Twin Cities area. We have all that in detail. With that said, that puts us at the forefront of working to deter a couple of problems that are major problems in our industry. Worker misclassification, labor exploitation, which oftentimes crosses over into human trafficking, workers' comp insurance fraud, tax, tax fraud, et cetera. And so we have been on the forefront of that work. I appreciate the time to speak today on just some of our concerns that we have about 700 American Boulevard West. First, just in general, construction that is multi-unit framed in wood, seeking assistance to build either senior housing or affordable housing, is a segment of our industry where we see frequent problems with misclassification and other issues. Thus, we, we will closely monitor this site, and we closely monitor sites like this. This is a kind of a red flag, just segment of our industry. Second, the general contractor for the site is expected to be Eagle Building Company. There are several public documents available, which I, I know y'all should have in your inbox, indicating concerns with the primary subs and lower-tiered subs that have been used by Eagle Building Company. Just to highlight a few examples, most recently Nelson Lopez pled guilty and was sentenced for workers' compensation insurance fraud just this last month, just this past month. Nelson Lopez worked on both the Rosemary Apartments in Hugo, as well as 108 Place right here in Bloomington, where both, both of those sites were overseen by Eagle Building Company as a general contractor. Also, in a summons document for the Fourth Judicial District Court, the state of Minnesota, Attorney General Keith Ellison versus Property Maintenance and Construction, also known as PMC, and Leopoldo Pitmentel Jr., on page eight, these sites are also listed, so take a close look at that. Furthermore, just other folks, Nelson Lopez, Rangel Torres, MO Framing, Castante Construction, Saul Cesaras have all worked directly underneath the supervision of Wolf, which is a subcontractor that Eagle uses. Wolf regularly uses the subcontractor's Absolute Drywall and Painting America, and we have plenty of documents, publicly, plenty of public documents we can send you on, on those folks as well. So unfortunately, although we love building things, and we would love to see a lot of affordable housing built, currently at this point, we are in opposition to this project, unless the current expected general contractor, Eagle Building Company, is prepared to do business differently than they have in the past. One, that ensures that workers on the site are being classified properly, compensated fairly, and not in an environment that has a potential risk of labor exploitation. We strongly urge the city council to keep this in mind, not only on this project, but as you move forward with all construction in the city, to please ask the tough questions. Wherever there's public assistance or variances asked for, please keep in mind default language, also known as clawback language, and make sure that, you know, we'd ask that you really ask what are the values around construction in the city, and really start to seriously have that conversation, and put that into, into code if possible. I appreciate your time this evening, and, and like I said, we asked that you take a look at the documents. I have a couple other colleagues here that would also like to speak. I do want to say that I am available for any follow-up questions, I think, you know, just call my cell phone, happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Bussey. Councilmembers, my name is Dan McConnell, I'm the Business Manager of the Minneapolis Building and Construction Trades Council. Concerns are very similar to what Ms. Nelson just shared. You know, I represent 17,000 construction workers in the western metro area, 25 affiliate local unions, two of them are here tonight. Over the last several years, I've been spending a lot of time on wage theft and labor trafficking concerns on construction projects. We've really seen it grow from, you know, people just, you know, obviously, we're a union, right? We don't like to see non-union projects, right? And it's grown beyond just a simple union, non-union issue, right? The legitimate non-union contractors have really gone away to a large extent in this, in this marketplace. Where we seeing this, this kind of labor trafficking and really unconscionable behavior on these projects and how they're done. So this developer, we've had a really good relationship over the years with the developer. We worked on him, most recently on a project, the old Broadway Pizza, very successful project. We'd love to work with him again. We've taught, had conversations with him about this project, and they've indicated that they, as, as Kim, Ms. Nelson indicated, they're going to, thinking about using Eagle on this project, which we raised concerns with them about the project, and because this is our one chance to get it in the public, you know, we're here tonight, right? So we're hopeful that we can work things out, but I do want to make sure that we put the, put the marker down, I guess. So as Ms. Nelson again mentioned, we sent you several documents outlining the concerns we're aware of. I think the most concerning one I saw was Alberto Rangel Torres, who Bloomington Police investigated in 2019. He's currently serving a 12-year sentence in federal prison for sex trafficking related to one of the projects that he worked on, that Eagle, Eagle Builders was part of. We were hugely supportive of building affordable housing. As I mentioned, we did a previous project with the developer, our pension funds invested in that project. We'd love to have an opportunity here. Let be that as may, you know, we don't want to see illicit behavior on these projects, right? That's our job to advocate for workers. We don't want to see it be a false choice between building affordable housing and treating workers well. We think that's not a fair comparison to make, and we just ask if there's public financing or public levers you can pull on this, I think you own the property, right? So you should have plenty of ability to set conditions over the sale of the property. We just ask you to ensure that the project is something we can all be proud of, and that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell.
Good evening, Mayor Belsie and councilmembers. My name is Octavio Chong Bustamante. I work as an organizer for Launa Labor International Union in North America. Launa is a labor organization that seeks to advance the welfare of union and non-union construction workers in Minnesota. Our members do all type of construction, from demolition to concrete, placement to asbestos removal. Our membership is diverse and we have members and retirees who live right here in Bloomington. Also, we represent almost 14,000 members statewide. I understand that Schaefer Richardson is proposing a senior housing development that will be located as 700 American Boulevard. It results in my understanding that this development will utilize low-income housing tax credits and tax-armed funds to ensure affordability. Like I mentioned in my introduction, my job is to seek to advance the welfare of union and non-union construction workers. One of the ways that I do that is by going to non-union job sites to empower workers, to speak up if they are going through issues like discrimination, worker misclassification or intimidation, which is something that happens a lot on jobs that are being done by immigrant workers. A couple of years ago, Schaefer Richardson developed a multifamily project in Wiber Lake where I live. One of the subcontractors working on the project was environmental, stoneworks. I believe that they, that there could be 100 or more masons and labors on environmental stoneworks projects who have been misclassified as independent contractors and who have been denied overtime pay, unemployment insurance and other benefits that contractors are required to provide to their employees. These workers talked to me about having to pay for their own liability and working compensation insurance and paying higher taxes rates because they have been misclassified. As the developer of the project, Schaefer Richardson, has the responsibility to know who's working on the projects and to make sure that works are being treated fairly. Preventing this type of exploitative, preventing this type of exploitative activities is everyone's responsibility. It's everyone's responsibility. You guys' responsibilities is everyone. That's why it's important to be proactive and having cities policies that are going to protect workers. Because at the end of the day, I think that what everybody, everybody wants to do is to work and go home and to enjoy life. But when you are an immigrant, especially an immigrant without documents, it is hard to speak up and contractors take advantage of that situation. I asked the city of Bloomington to protect workers by passing policies that will do so and ask the developer to please, please, please make sure that every worker on your side is going to be treated, treated with dignity and respect. I would like to share a report on affordable housing where I mention some of our concerns about some of, some of these projects that are done by immigrant workers, who a lot of times are being, taken advantage of or are being exploited. I also give more details on the company that Schaefer Richardson has worked with before that was describing to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you could hand them to Mr. Brillert, Mr. Sable, that'd be perfect. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Sable, I believe we had someone on the line and I believe they may have dropped off, or is anybody back on the line now?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. They were on and then they have dropped off, so no one else is on the line.
Very good. Last call for anybody here in the council chambers? Very good. Thank you for your comments this evening. Counsel, seeing no one coming forward, knowing no one on the line, I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.4.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Martin to close the public hearing on item 4.4. No further counsel discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0, closing the public hearing. So counsel, questions, comments on this? I think the, the issues that were brought forward are important and issues that we need to, to take seriously and concentrate on. We, you know, we always, we always have the conversation in any public bidding situation where it's, the bid goes to the lowest responsible bidder, right? And the lowest we can all agree on, it's the dollars and cents. But I think it's incumbent on public bodies like this and other public bodies to really refine and hone in on that notion of responsible. And this may be a case of this. And I'm not sure where we are within the, the process here, within the situation. I would turn to our city attorney and ask, in terms of the, the final development plan and any development agreement, is there a specific language? Is there specific work we can do within that to, to ensure that we avoid the, the issues that we've heard this evening?
Thank you, mayor members. We've actually had this on our radar a bit, increasingly within the last couple of months. Generally speaking, you know, employment conditions on construction sites, we've become increasingly aware of that statewide and also within the region. So our folks in legal, specifically in the compliance division, have been talking with staff down in community development to look at our development agreements and review some possible language that can be added to strengthen the type of requirements that we compel the developers to comply with. So if you're looking for some direction, I think it would be helpful for you to suggest that staff prepare an agreement with the developer that requires the prime contractor and its subs to follow the employment laws that were specifically highlighted during public comment, and then we can put together some language to try and accomplish that. Based on what I've, the research that I've done, I believe that that subsequent, that that subsequent agreement would likely come before the body for approval, probably in the first or second quarter of 2024. So if you're thinking about sort of when the timing on that is, that's what I'm guessing it is. Does that make sense to staff? They're seeing, they're nodding heads. So we can start putting that together. We've already done some work on it. But unfortunately, Bloomington is not unique in, in being told about some of these concerns on construction sites.
Thank you, Ms. Manderscheid. Basically, what you just outlined there, I think, as I look down the table here, I don't see any heads shaking. I see everyone nodding. I think it makes a perfect sense. And I think we, we need to do everything that we can. We've got to require that the developer take every action to ensure that the workers at the 700 American Boulevard West project are treated with dignity and respect. And I think we need to, we need to codify that as best we can. Codify is probably the incorrect verb, but I mean, to, to put that into our development agreements and formalize that so that it's understood very clearly what our expectations are as the city of Bloomington.
Yes, mayor members, certainly we can put something in a development agreement in this particular instance. If the council's looking to put something in, in the code, that's certainly something that you could direct us to take, take on as well. We're putting together work plans right now, so just let us know.
I think in the development agreement, I think it's a no-brainer. I think that's an absolute. And counsel, do we want, do we want staff to look at it in terms of maybe codify was the correct verb there? So to maybe to codify this in, in the best way possible for what we're trying to do. Mr. Verbrugge, something to add?
I was just going to reaffirm, Mr. Mayor, that if counsel wants us to, we can spend some staff effort developing what that language might look like for ordinance consideration by the council.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter, then Councilmember Lohman, then Councilmember DeLisandro. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for putting that forth as a proposal to move forward. I am definitely in support. I'm wondering, in the specific development agreement that we're talking about for this project, would that include clawback language? So if something were to happen and they weren't to hold up their end of the agreement, considering how much public benefit is going into this project, I mean, is that something we could put into the contract?
Ms. Manderscheid?
Mayor members, we can certainly look at that. I'm, I'm not able to speak specifically on, on the language at this point. We haven't drafted any of it yet. But we can certainly keep it into consideration and if we can find a way to include it, we certainly will.
Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you, Mayor. So my question is, I think Councilmember Carter, for what you asked of that informsment in terms of what I want to ask in terms of timing, I know, in terms of wage theft and the other issues that were raised this evening, is it possible to bring back an ordinance prior to us with regard to wage theft and the other issues that were raised here, prior to finally either passing or moving this forward? Is that, is that too tight of a timeline? Is there a way to delay this to be sure that that is done first and then have this apply to that?
Ms. Manderscheid?
Mayor members, certainly, say generally speaking, an ordinance takes around 90 days from start to finish, when we don't have to go through planning commission. So this would probably not be a planning commission item, probably would not be in those chapters. That said, certainly, the planning commission might have some interest in hearing it. And we would want to honor that request if they want to make a recommendation. Generally speaking, I believe that we, I don't know what the timing is on the specifics of when the development agreement is expected. April? Okay, so theoretically, I think it's possible. And we could look at how quickly we could turn something like that around. Setting up the compliance on the back end of it would be a bigger endeavor and creating the enforcement mechanism for that. I saw the hand raised in the audience. I don't know if you want to...
Councilmember Lohman, you okay with, was your question?
Yeah, and let me just ask one follow-up to, directly to that, that question. And we are the, we in effect are putting this forward so we could delay this, right? Or is there, or are we on a, on a timeline with, with this, since we have a developer selected, that we've got to comply with, with that timeframe?
Ms. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And councilmembers, what's being asked of tonight, councilmembers, is land use action. It's not necessarily related to the specific policy issue that we're discussing. The time for consideration of what language would be appropriate is at the time that we are considering a development agreement with, with the owner and developer of the property.
So that would be April. And I, and I would, as we're working on the land use approval this evening, I, we can talk land use approval. I think the policy issue that we're talking about here, it's important, I would hate to rush into it. I would make sure, I would want to make sure that we do it correctly. I would, I would defer to staff as we look and see whether or not April is the appropriate amount of time. They say 30 days, I mean, it's 120 days. But then you got, it's never easy, right? I mean, it's always, they'll be back and forth. So I think my recommendation tonight, to move forward with what we've got tonight, to direct staff to, to begin to write up the final development agreement with specific language that we talked about, and then see how the work progresses in terms of actually putting this within, within city code. That make sense?
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may also, the, the timing, the 90 days that the city attorney talked about, we do have examples in other municipalities that we can look to in terms of ordinance language. The staff is already familiar with some of that. I think part of it depends on what the direction from the council is in terms of the level of engagement that you wish to have as we develop this ordinance consideration. And again, making sure that we're true to our intent to have community engagement, making sure we get a clear expectation from council on what the promise is to the community for what amount of input will be sought and how we're going to use that input in the process. So we may want to take longer than the 90 days, and I think we still can effectively include language in a development agreement if council wants to do that. We just won't have maybe some of the backend things that city attorney talked about in terms of the compliance steps in place for. But if we're running those processes on a dual track, we can certainly figure out the one at the same time we're doing the other.
Does that make sense, councilmember?
Yeah, and I'll wait till we have a comment period, so.
Very good. Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, two questions. And one is related to what Mr. Verbrugge just said. I was gonna, I was gonna ask, it, it seems like we can cover ourselves in terms of what we're trying to accomplish here with this specific project through that development agreement, which gives us more time to then develop the ordinance. So I understand that correctly. The, the other area of, of opportunity, I think we're already working on, and so I wanted to throw this out there as a question to the staff, are we already looking at these kinds of, of, of workplace conditions in the review we're doing around our procurement equity projects anyway? My understanding is that we do have some work being done with procurement in places like that around, around equity, you know, in suppliers and all that kind of stuff. This feels very much like a thing that you could add into that fairly quick, fairly easily to help, to help drive, you know, workers' accommodation, workers' rights into that, that work. I don't know if that was something that was thought of or whether or not we could consider that, but I know that's actively being worked at the moment and it feels like it might, this might slot in very well to that, which would maybe make the overall work plan not, it doesn't get a lot bigger, it just gets more focused in that particular area as part of that work. Is that an option for us?
Mr. Verbrugge?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, staff is happy to follow up with you, councilmember, and provide additional information, but for the purpose of the record, related to the public hearing for the specific action tonight, it's not necessarily germane to the property or the action. So I'd rather not have that be part of the record, but we'll follow up with you and provide additional information.
Okay, sure. Makes sense. Thanks.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. This is probably just my own problem here, but can, I understand the land part of this, the rezoning of it, but aren't we approving the final plans? Isn't that part of the action we're taking?
We're, we're approving the final development plans, not the final development agreement.
Okay.
There's a distinction with very little difference, but there...
And, and, but that's my problem.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, it is, it is a little, it is an important difference in that the, the, you know, the approval for what the plan is going to be will be set. If the developer were not seeking assistance from the city to move the project forward, the project could move ahead. We know that's not the case because of the pro forma that's been presented and just the, the parameters of the, of the deal that they're looking at. So they will have entitlements for this development for X period of time, but if they don't come forward seeking financial assistance, the project either won't go forward or it will at a time that the council is satisfied that other things have been said, have been taken care of.
Okay. The second question I have, given the change in the number of units, a reduction by almost 25%, a reduction in the commercial space by 75%, are any of the other RFPs still viable?
Mr. Verbrugge?
Mr. Mayor, I don't think that we can, I don't think that we can answer that because we haven't done the work necessary to understand market conditions or economies associated with what those proposals were, having dismissed them when we made the determination to work with Schaefer Richardson.
Discussion on this? Thoughts, Councilmember, Councilmember Nelson, and I know Councilmember Lohman wanted it as well. Councilmember Nelson? Councilmember Lohman, I think.
Don't mind me switching. So, you know, it's, it's interesting, Councilmember Nelson had, had raised this idea of that 25% reduction, you know, from the RFP. And, you know, I, I think that, you know, given, you know, what we, we talked about, Mayor, with regard to, you know, you know, trying to do affordable housing and, you know, and in the, in the units in which that we, we get here, this is an area where we really do need a lot of assistance. I think by my count here, looks like we lost someone, the neighborhood of 22 units in that process, you know, with regard to, with regard to parking. And so I am wondering if it makes some sense to kind of go back to this and see if there's a way that we can kind of rectify that and get us closer to that, that, you know, those 22 that were lost, either with regard to, you know, what, you know, what staff has brought forward. And so that's just, you know, my, my, my initial thinking as I, as I look at these, these pieces. And then, you know, you know, certainly, and I want to, I want to just be really clear that the ordinance piece, I should leave that, that piece till the end of the, end of the meeting, because I know that that is technically not a part of what we're discussing here. So I want to be extremely careful about that. You know, and I, you know, I have heard about these things that are here and I know that we, you know, we're kind of, I'm kind of getting ahead of ourselves here, but I do have concerns about, you know, given our, our mission statements and our strategic priorities and that type of thing, that, you know, these fall within that. And I'm, I'm reluctant, you know, given the stances that we've taken, you know, with our strategic priorities. And I know that this is at that last minute, and I'm kind of in a sense, in a trick bag because, you know, we have something before us, Mayor. And, you know, how do we, you know, write standards for something, you know, that we haven't done in the past? And so I, I'm afraid that, you know... And so I, I'm afraid that, you know, we haven't already done that, so I'm kind of in a, I'm trying to figure out a way to get out of this, out of this mess. So that's, that's what I'm looking to you, Mayor, because I, I really do want to stay true to, you know, you know, what the community and all of us came together to, to develop those, that mission statement, and when it comes to equity and inclusion, I've got some grave concerns if we go down this route, just as it's written today, without seeing what is, what's put together completely, without having that final, with the, without having what we're not discussing today, that, that final, final direction, so. In terms of having some, some draft language, which is impossible to have right now, and I know that's above and beyond the scope of, of today. You understand what I'm saying?
I do indeed.
It's a trick bag, so.
Yep. Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I understand exactly where you're coming from, councilmember Loman. I would suggest if the council is not satisfied with the project that's being presented, that you deny it and tell us to go back out to the market. What the applicant has presented is what the applicant feels is market viable, given the financial conditions that exist today. I'd also remind the council that I, I think this is meeting an important market niche in our community, in that all 100, or all of the units are affordable, and it's for senior apartments. We have heard from the community that there is a need within the community for affordable senior living, and this project would be meeting that expressed need from the community. So I, I think it is consistent with our strategic plan. If I had my druthers, frankly, we'd have a, a different project just because that, the, it's not a, it's not, in any way, a characterization of Schaefer Richardson or the proposal that they've made, it's a highly visible intersection. And if there were a better project out there, I think we probably would have discovered it, because we've been trying to develop this property for 10 years now, right? And so the, the market conditions are such that it's a very difficult project to bring forward, and I think that Schaefer Richardson has found the, the best way to do that.
Uh, councilmember Nelson? Are you looking to get back in, and then councilmember Martin? Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Actually, I appreciate those comments, city manager. What I heard from Schaefer Richardson representative was that they thought they could get more units and, but for some things that we're requiring as a city, and so I'm wondering if it, it makes sense to explore that with more time. I, you know, I do feel a little uncomfortable approving something that's so different than what the RFP was when there were other people in the marketplace that may have been able to do something and meet more of our goals. And so I kind of have that dual thing that I'm hearing from the, the project coordinator company that they could do more, and I have other RFPs that say that they could do more as well, and would it make any sense to spend a little bit more time working on them while simultaneously addressing the concerns that were raised, making sure that obviously everyone is treated and classified correctly? That just, in my mind, makes absolute sense. I mean, people should follow the law. I don't know why this is a big, huge question, and it should be pretty straightforward to everybody that they do that. I totally recognize that people don't do that, and, and they should be held to account for that. So those are my comments. I'm just wondering if a little bit more time to see if we can get more units, get some of those units back, see what the concerns, see what their ideas are in terms of doing that, or, and/or see if there's one of the other ones that makes more sense at this point, given the changes and the shift in this project. But, you know, I, I think they've done good, hard work, as the, as the city manager has, has mentioned, and it's a tough, it's a tough place. It's a tough place to develop, and they got a plan, and that's what's before us, and, you know, ideally, you know, let's not, like, perfect get in the way of good, so.
Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Nelson, I think it's, uh, comments fully understood. We had the same conversation with the council and the port in a joint meeting on July 31st about the reduction in the scope of the project, and staff were directed to move forward with that reduction based on that conversation. And so if, if we're going to go back again and change that decision from July 31st, we'd probably need pretty clear direction about what it is that we're trying to accomplish at that point.
Councilmember Martin?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, I appreciate councilmember Nelson alluding to not making the perfect the enemy of the good, but I guess coming at it from the, the perspective of, yes, it's not 100% of what we were ideally hoping for, but it is an iterative opportunity on the policies that are holding the project back from achieving that, and obviously not kind of within the scope of, of this conversation, but longer term, it feels like an opportunity to inform, say, the next iteration of the Opportunity Housing Ordinance, the larger conversation about these code requirements. So it might, might not get to that, that dream destination with this specific project. We now have stakeholders in the room that could tell you exactly what the next project would need in order to get you across that finish line, so. And then at that point, it's in a comprehensive framework, as opposed to the specific constraints of this one lot, this one project, the economics of this.
Councilmember Alessandro?
Just my comments on this. I think that, I think, number one, if we have, if we have the ability to, to insert into our explicit development agreement on here, and it sounds like, based on the commentary we got in, in public comment period, that Schaefer Richardson is a good company that will do the right thing here, so I'm not concerned about that, and as far as I can tell, assuming we are able to put in place the language. Sounds like everybody is excited to work with them and have them build something here in Bloomington, so let's hope that that's true. The, the comment I would make is, I don't, I don't, knowing that we already knew that these reductions were happening, and we approved them in July, I don't want to open that can of worms again myself, not to, mostly because I am a huge fan of moving fast, generally speaking, and I am concerned that any delay we would impart on this for want of, you know, 10 more units or whatever, could result in something disastrous because of the market conditions we have, volatility in the economic conditions, you know, next thing you know, it's 50% more expensive to build everything, right? Because of some stupid thing that happened in supply chain, or whatever. And, and so, you know, letting, making sure that we get this lockdown that we have, you know, concerted effort to get 120-plus units of affordable senior living into Bloomington feels like a really good thing for us to be doing. And so I, I, I like the idea that we can hold the developer to account in accordance with our values and in accordance with the worker requirements that we know we want to enforce, and I like the idea that we can move this project forward with that in mind if we can get that development agreement put together. And then in terms of code, like I said, I think that there's opportunity for us to, to look at that more string, stringently, and with, if we're opening up the Opportunity Housing Ordinance, if we're opening up the, the work in procurement, wherever we're doing that, to, to make sure we have explicit, you know, language around what we will and won't accept when it comes to worker, wage theft, prevailing wage, you know, these kinds of issues that are just really important, so. So, you know, let me know if you want me to make the motion when you're ready.
I want to make sure everybody's had an opportunity to speak. I just want to chime in. I, I agree with what you, a lot of what you said, councilmember Alessandro, the fact that, that this body and the Port Authority did look at this over the summer and gave the go-ahead. I think we have to take that into account. Bodies can change their minds, I understand that, but I think we have made at least the indication that we were happy and comfortable with this moving forward as it was. I have also, I think as one of two members of this council that were on the council when the Frown Shoe proposal came forward low these years ago, and if I recall, I, I voted against that development, saying something better will come along. We can wait and we can get something that fits our needs and our niche more perfectly, and that was a decade ago. And I, I have, I'm a little bit gun-shy that if we do that again, I'm worried that we're going to be looking at a blank parcel of, of ground on a, on a prime spot in Bloomington for a number of years, and I don't want to see that happen. Would I, echoing Mr. Verbrugge's comments, would I like something bigger and better and more flashy and more important on that very important intersection? Yes, I would, but this is what we've got in front of us right now, and this is where we are in this conversation. And so I appreciate the comments of the councilmembers, but I, I do think this is worth moving forward on, and agree with everybody's comments that the, the wage issues around this certainly need to be dealt with in, in a variety of different ways, and I think we're committed to moving forward on that. But in terms of this land use decision, these development agreements, personally, I'm ready to move them forward and approve them this evening. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to note that I actually was not at that part of the meeting, so that may be why I'm bringing some of these things up at this point. I, I arrived late due to a conflict in my schedule, and I was not in that discussion, so.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for that clarification. Counsel, any additional comments? If not, let's see where we are on this. Councilmember Alessandro?
I'll move to adopt an ordinance amending the zoning, is that the right one? Yes, the zoning map by rezoning 700 American Boulevard West from B-2 PD general commercial plan development to RM 100 PD high-density residential plan development.
Motion by councilmembers Alessandro, second by councilmember Martin, to adopt the ordinance amending the zoning map by rezoning 700 American Boulevard West from B-2 to RM 100. Any further counsel discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Councilmember Alessandro, would you be willing to continue on?
I will. I'll make, if it's okay, I'll make a comment after we get to, through motion.
Very good, yes. If you get the motion in a second, then we'll open it up for comments.
Great. Move to approve preliminary and final development plans for a five-story, 128-unit senior apartment and 1,500 square foot of commercial space at 700 American Boulevard West, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
Motion by councilmember Alessandro, second by councilmember Martin, to approve the preliminary and final development plans for the proposal at 700 American Boulevard West, subject to the conditions and the code requirements attached to the staff report. Counsel, comments on this? Councilmember Alessandro?
I had a quick, I had a quick comment question on the specific language here. It mentions, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report, is it possible to amend language in accordance with the, for the purposes of making note that we expect certain things in the, in the development agreement, or something like that?
I, I think that's entirely, it's entirely acceptable, and I think with, I'll, I'll turn to the city attorney to tell me how to do this most efficiently.
Mayor members, the, the motion has been made on the final, on the preliminary and final plat, or excuse me, excuse me, goodness sakes, the preliminary and final development plans with these very specific numbers and unit counts in them, and based on the presentation and information in the staff report, you could give direction to staff after you vote on that PDP and Final Development Plan motion, directing staff to incorporate the elements that you heard in the staff discussion in a separate motion afterwards. I think it's important to keep these land use approvals clean. Is staff, land use staff, planning staff, yeah, I'm getting nodding heads on that.
Thank you, Ms. Manderscheid. So is that clear? We do this and then make a second motion directing staff to follow up on this?
Very good.
Very good? Oh, okay, very good. That was the question. So we have a motion and a second on the table regarding the preliminary and final development plans. Any further counsel discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-1 with councilmember Nelson in, in opposition. Very good now. Councilmember Alessandro, as councilmember Alessandro said, I think we should make a motion now to direct staff to, I can't remember all the words you said, Ms. Manderscheid, but to, to, to follow up in, in ways that we had talked about in terms of the issues that were brought forward this evening.
Mayor members, let me see if I can find my language.
Please.
For your consideration, Mayor and members, directing staff to prepare an agreement with Schaefer Richardson that requires the prime contractor and its subcontractors to follow the employment laws highlighted during public comment. How's that?
Councilmember Carter?
Um, I may suggest all subcontractors, because I think there can be subcontractors of subcontractors of subcontract, you know, and I don't want it to be just the ones that Schaefer Richardson subcontracts. I think that we need to make clear that all subcontractors on the project need to comply.
So, Mayor, if I could, you want me to restate it?
If you could, please.
Uh, directing staff to prepare an agreement with Schaefer Richardson that requires the prime contractor and all subcontractors to follow the employment laws highlighted during public comment.
Counsel, are we comfortable with that? Direction towards staff? Very good. I would make a motion that we, we, we make that motion as, as expressed by the city attorney.
Second?
Second.
You're comfortable with that, Ms., Ms. Manderscheid?
Oh, yes.
Oh, very good, okay.
I'm sorry. I thought you were looking at Matt for.
Okay, very good.
I'm sending Matt that language.
Very good, very good. We have a motion and a second. I'm sorry, I moved to the second one. Was that councilmember Carter?
It was.
Very good. Questions on this? Councilmember Loman?
I mean, I could make a comment, I'm just glad we, glad we did this, so I just, I'm happy that we're, and I hope that when we get to the, our organizational business, that we can also additionally, in its proper place, move another ordinance around wage theft as well. So happy to support this and that later on this evening.
Councilmember Alessandro?
Quick question of clarification. So as the motion is stated at the moment, it says, as, as indicated or addressed and noted in public comment, are we going to be more specific when we actually write the agreement about what those particular employment law requirements are? I assume so, but I wanted to double check.
That will be my expectation, but I'll look to Ms. Manderscheid.
Uh, mayor members, yes. What I plan to do is re-listen to it, and I'm sure staff will as well, but these are the ones that I got during public testimony, just so you know what's in my head. Misclassifications, conditions, sorry, I wrote that shorthand. I think it works like conditions. Trafficking and pay denials, generically speaking, in those categories, but we'll listen to the tape again and make sure we've captured everything from public testimony.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
Two questions. Is it possible that we didn't hear every employment law that might be of interest in public hearing? And should we make it more broad to just have more, I mean, and then my second question is, or just for clarification, we're not asking Schaefer Richardson to do anything more than is already required under law. We just want to ensure that, we want to make sure that we have that in our agreement, given the public participation, but we're not asking for anything outside of what's already required of them. Is that accurate? So, two-part.
Mayor members, correct. Our, our standard template for development agreement already requires compliance with the law, generically speaking. These are employment laws that are, that we're talking about here, both federal and state, and they already have to comply with all of those. What I suspect will come out in the drafting is some reporting requirements, and sort of a statement's evidence of compliance would be my suspicion, although obviously we haven't drafted any words yet, but all of the generic and specific employment laws are already required to be complied with.
Uh, councilmember Nelson, quick follow-up?
Yeah, quick follow-up. Is it possible, and I don't know if she's interested, to get any feedback from Schaefer Richardson on this, because this was not on the agenda? Is that a possibility? And I have no idea if you want to even say anything about it or not.
Okay. Let me get one more question from councilmember Carter, and then if you, if you wanted to bring something forward, be happy to listen. Councilmember Carter?
Um, yeah, the other thing that I heard and that I mentioned earlier was the clawback language, and I don't think that that is part of state law. I, you know, I think we are allowed to put that into contracts, but I don't, so, although there are employment laws, I don't think clawback language is, you know, part of that, and so, I mean, I could be completely wrong, but I just think that having some kind of, you know, accountability enforcement mechanism beyond reporting, right? In case something does go wrong, I just think it ensures, ensures compliance in a much greater way.
So mayor members, if I may, I wrote, I wrote that down, councilmember Carter. The, the one reason that I'm a little hesitant to speak specifically about this, I want to take a look at the OHO and see what language is in that, because I suspect that there's some requirements there, and I, if we have it already in our code, we would rely on that.
All right. Ms. Anthony, we bundled a lot up here for you.
I took some notes.
Very good. Very good.
So, no, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I appreciate the opportunity to come back up. It's a lot, and I appreciate the effort to do the right thing, which is what I'm hearing from you all tonight, is that you want to make sure that you're doing the right thing and that you're following your values, and that's the way that we operate as well. For the record, we, we agree with everything that was said tonight. It is, it is our position that every employee who steps on our sites is treated fairly, is paid fairly, and that our contractors are held to that standard. Before we go out and select a contractor, we talk to them specifically about that expectation. The contractor that we are planning to use for the site has a compliance program. We're happy to work to provide information on that and make sure it's as robust as possible. But I just want to make the point clear that that is our expectation. It is our values. That marries what you're talking about tonight, and we don't have a problem complying with the law. That's our expectation. As Mr. McConnell discussed, we work with the unions regularly. We work with AFL-CIO. They're our sponsor on actually two projects for almost 350 affordable units in the metro area. There is no conflict for us in that regard. And to your point, Councilmember Nelson, we, we will follow the law. We always endeavor to follow the law. I think that it's an important conversation tonight, and we're happy to be part of the solution. I did want to mention, just from a timing standpoint, that as is such with affordable housing projects, there are timelines that go along with funding. You all approved a proposal for us to pursue, pursue housing conduit bonds. If we're successful in that in January, it does start a clock. I just want to make that clear, because I would hate to lose out on that opportunity for financing while you all are creating and debating and seeking public comment on a very important policy for your city. So we're happy to be, you know, to do what we can to make sure that our project is held accountable, which we expect to meet, without hamstringing the project for moving forward and losing out on that important financing while the city puts together an important ordinance. So, any questions for me?
Questions for Ms. Anthony? Thank you for those comments. And I, I hope we didn't imply that we were casting aspersions in any way on Schaefer Richardson in terms of your willingness and your, your absolute commitment to upholding the law, because I don't think that was the intention. I think the intention was just to make sure that, that again, all workers are treated fairly. All workers are treated equally and that the values of this community are upheld, so.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Verbrugge? Oh, you had your microphone on. You fooled me there.
Yeah, I have no additional comments.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lohman?
Sorry, Mayor, just, just one question, just a little concerned about the clawback language. If we haven't done that before, and that's not something that's in law, I'm just a little bit nervous about trying to do that. That's, you know, why I prefer to have something like that placed in a, in a ordinance that we work through. I'm just concerned about, that may put the city in a, in a adverse position. If I'm wrong with that, I'm happy to support that, but I'm concerned about adding that.
Well, Councilmember, I think that's why Ms. Manderscheid said that we're going to take a look at it and see how it applies to the OHO and other work that we're doing. And if it makes sense and it fits, yes. If not, we could certainly include it in other ordinance possibilities, or I'm sure our legal staff will look at different ways that we could skin that cat.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, just have that on the record as, if I support this and I do plan on supporting it, that that's my, my one concern with that, with that piece, so.
Very good. All right. Are we all good?
We, I think we have the motion and the second on the table, right?
We have a motion and a second on the table. I'm just making sure everybody has chimed in, all right?
One final thing. This is going to come back, no, it's going to come back to, it's going to come back to council for approval, right? The actual development agreement?
We're three months out from that, yes.
Not the, not the ordinance, but the development agreement itself.
Yes.
So both of those things, but they're not, they're now parallelized, they're not on the same timeline.
Correct.
We're not going to impact the timeline that was of concern to Schaefer Richardson. Okay, great, yeah, great, wonderful, thank you.
No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thanks much for the conversation, and thanks to all for the conversation. It was an important one to have, and I'm glad we finally, we've kind of danced around this a bit in the past, and I'm glad we finally did have this conversation. I think it was on the agenda for next year at some point, but I'm glad we got to it this year and got it under, underway. And thanks, Ms. Manderscheid, Mr. Verbrugge, for your input on this. I think it's very helpful when you're able to chime in and give us some direction and keep us out of trouble, basically, so I appreciate that as well. Very good, thank you all. We will move on to our final public hearing of the evening. This is our public hearing item 4.5 on our miscellaneous issues for ordinances 2023. This is a yearly toe-tapper for everybody. This is, when we do this annually, just to clean up some of our ordinances and so on, and Mallory Richto, I don't know that we have seen you in front of the council before. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. It's good to be here. There was the scrambling egg ordinance in July, but.
Oh, okay.
But yes, it's good to see you all again.
My memory's not what it used to be.
Wonderful time of year.
Welcome back, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, and a happy miscellaneous season to you all. So, yeah, miscellaneous season is upon us, and, yeah, so I think Councilmember Moa, you're the new face in the crowd this year. Hello, nice to meet you. So we prepare ordinances and we bundle them together, because usually they don't on their own merit the time and overhead processes of writing a report and going through planning commission, so we bring them together, and, and so we have 18 amendment or ordinance proposals for you today. So this year, we developed a new process for miscellaneous, which is comprised of four sort of, 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 four tenants, which is, we created one avenue where proposals that were suggested from the community development department and the planning division had one, one route to go, which is our SharePoint site. But because of that, it used to come from a lot of different places, which then created communication issues, we opened the window. So March through September, we had the entire time open, so that if anyone saw anything in our code that looked like a typo or something that was unclear or caused an enforcement issue, that they could bring it and report it directly to us. Secondly, we created a continual peer review process, and what this looked like was quarterly, at our all-staff meeting in the planning division, we would rank each of the proposed ordinances based on four different criteria. The most important being, does this fit the scope of what is required of a miscellaneous issue, which is an issue that does not of its own get a public hearing. So that's usually the first priority prioritization. We also looked at impact, we looked at difficulty, and we looked at, what was the other one? Now it's slipping my mind. Impact, impact, complexity, that was the other one. And so, as, as far as complexity and difficulty, those things in its, of their own, did not contribute to the prioritization criteria, though in a year that we have maybe 40 proposals for miscellaneous issues, it could be used to prioritize which ones would be most important for that year's process. I also want to say that we did look at impact as a, as evidence for, is this a project that might require the rapid racial equity impact analysis? And so this year, because we did some data gathering through our peer review process, none of our projects ranked above a four, which then requires that rapid racial equity impact analysis. We did have some that ranked in the threes, and so that was kind of an area where we had to work with our colleagues in the Office of Racial Equity and Inclusion, and we also asked Planning Commission, is this something that warrants a rapid racial equity impact analysis? And the verdict coming back from our partners and from Planning Commission was that there wasn't, which is great, because that means that we are totally hitting the mark on what is a miscellaneous issue. So, that is our process, a little background on our process this year. Here's our, our timeline, we're here in December, and so this has, we've been open since March, and once we put in place the new process, and here we are, happy December. There it is, there's the animation you all know and love. Okay, so we have cleanup items that are on the left-hand side of the table, and those are items A through I, and I will go through those rather quickly this evening. And then we have items J through R, which are more substantive, and those are the items that I will spend a little more time covering today, but I have, we can always go back if there's any questions. Okay, so getting started with the ordinances themselves, we have ordinance A, which is a blank subsection as it exists. This happened in 2006 when the ordinance language was written, and so you see that on line L, it has a subsection of one, and those two are on the same line, which then created, oops, then created a gap. And so our plan or our proposal is to close this gap by moving the language up a line. Okay, second is type-two home business. So the notes on this one is that a couple of years ago, there was an amendment to change the final decision-maker to, for, to Planning Commission for a CUP, but this standard was missed, and so we suggest just striking the approved by city council, because through the normal conditional use permit process is approved by the Planning Commission. Okay, you may notice this one from last year. This is our site width diagram. We had to revise it again. As you can see, the site width measurement lines are not curvilinear as they are shown in the diagram that we approved last year. They are straight across, which is an important distinct, distinction. So we have updated the site width diagram to show that the lines are straight and matching our definition of how site width measurement lines are drawn and measured. Item D is not super exciting, but this is, there is an incorrect link. So chapter 21 is actually for recreational vehicle standards, instead of what is intended to reflect, which is to say, single-family dwelling standards. So an important distinction. So, item E, so height also does play into the setpacs. If a structure is over a certain height, then the setback is actually larger, but this is confusing the way that it is written in code. So our suggestion is to move the point eight underneath the table, under an assertisque that says that two-family dwelling structures must meet the high limits of the city code, and then it provides the link to the code, just for clarity. Okay, perimeter fencing. So this one, the perimeter fencing accidentally lists our drive-through standards instead of what is intended, what it is intended to show, which is our fence standards. So we are proposing to update that, so that does not exist anymore. Okay, this is a good one. This is section 21, 50201C, process and fees. We no longer have an RV permit denial, so we would like to remove that from the table. Okay, process H. Last year, a miscellaneous issue sought to replace information in our tables as, in terms of fees, processes and fees, and the fees now exist in appendix A. However, we missed one, and so we would like to change the purpose statement to direct the reader to appendix A, both under sub-point A and then within the table or above the table for subsection C. Okay, temporary borings. Okay, so this one comes to us from our environmental health colleagues. I knew Minnesota state statute moved the definition of a temporary boring from where it was, and then replaced it with the definition of an environmental well, which by definition no longer includes wells that are sealed within 72 hours. Because our environmental health colleague says that removing temporary borings from state code standards will align with the statutory definition change required by the new Minnesota state law. Okay, slide 15. So this, this is, we're getting into the more substantive ones, so we're really turning up the heat here. The R3 structure standards do not have a provision that detached accessory structures can be closer to the rear property line than 30 feet, which is allowed, and you can see here on the screen in R4, which is directly below the table. Oops, sorry about that. And, and so we would like to be consistent with that. So the appropriate language is that it, that the, the requirement is 30 feet, but 10 feet is allowed for garages and accessory buildings that are not connected to the sanitary sewer, which is the example that is directly below it. For item K, the farmer's market definition, our farmer's market, which is a use in our use table, does not currently have a definition in 1903, so we would like to add the definition of a farmer's market, and we would like it to match the chapter 14 definition, which exists in section 14, 601. The application form, so the strict adherence for the procedure that we require property owners to complete a specified application form for the administration of final site and building plans, preliminary development plans, final development plans, conditional use permits, and master sign plans, does present inefficiencies without any additional value. So we propose that a letter granting permission for the administration of these processes is sufficient to ensure that the purpose and the intent of this requirement, without needing to sign a very specific form, as it is currently stated. Okay. Non-conforming triggers, oh, this one was my idea. Code currently dictates that non-conforming site characteristics shall be brought into conformity if 25% of an, if there's 25% of an increase in floor area that has occurred. In the past, this has been interpreted as cumulative, but is not explicitly stated in code. So we propose within this amendment is that we specify that the, that this is cumulative of the floor area after the date which this proposed ordinance, if approved, is published and which would be prospectively December 28th. For ADU location, code does not currently dictate that accessory dwelling units are subject to the standard that prohibits their location between the principal structure and the street. Accessory structures that are not ADUs may not do this. So we propose that we change the ADU standards to indicate that such buildings may not exist when they are placed between, between the principal structure and the street. Displays of merchandise. Okay, so for displays of merchandise, we did two different small code changes. One is in 1903, and then to include installations that are equipment of personal convenience like Amazon lockers or UPS drop boxes. And we also updated the exterior storage standards in chapter 21 to, to make sure that such installations do not impact vehicle access lanes, and also we want to prohibit installations which are not incidental to the primary use of the property. The fence standards, so this, this one is in relation to the updates to the single and two-family standards, specifically the elimination of the prevailing front setback in the R1 zoning district. So because of that, this shifted how this code is interpreted, so the way that it has done so, though, means that you can effectively build an eight-foot full opacity, opacity fence in a residential area at a 30-foot setback. We felt that this does not support the purpose and intent of the fence code, which is to say that we should allow for fences to allow for privacy, but in general, we would like to maintain an open design along streets and to limit sight line obstructions. So we propose that residential fences may rise to a height of eight feet if it meets more the standards of what they existed before the prevailing setback was removed, which is such fences must either meet the 65-foot setback. which is such fences must either meet the 65-foot setback, which was the maximum, which was required under prevailing setback rules, and the fences should be located within the side or rear yards, which are not a budding, a budding a street much meet, must meet the principal structure setback. So you can't have a fence between the structure and the side yard setback that's eight foot and full opacity. Okay. Slide 22. Current code does not indicate that vehicle repair major and vehicle repair minor as a use types are intended to take place within the repair facility. And so this omission of this requirement may implicitly allow industrial activities to take place in the parking lot or in areas not intended for this use. So we added the words inside a building to the definition of both vehicle repair major and vehicle repair minor. Okay, so getting to the end here. Window coverings requirements are different in the HXR district than they are in any other comparable zoning districts. Specifically, there's no prohibition on film in HXR, and the method to establish percentage calculations is not consistent. So we would like to amend our window covering requirements for the HX, HXR district to match the comparable zoning district. And so staff recommends approval using the following motions. We have two different motions. We have items A through I, which are those quick cleanup items. And then we have J through R, which are those somewhat more substantive than quick cleanup items. And then we also have a summary of publication as well.
Very good, thank you. Council questions? Councilmember DeLisandro, and then Councilmember Lohman.
All right, let's go to N first.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nice to see you, Molly. My, my question is, why do we, like? I mean, it feels somewhat arbitrary to, to, to make a decision like this. So let me give you an example. So we, we have lots in, in Bloomington today that have, that have a very large front yard area. I, I don't, given, given the, what we were trying, we are trying to accomplish with ADUs and infill and all this other stuff, this just seems like a thing we are doing that we may not want to do. I, I don't think, I don't think council asked for it, I guess, is my first question. My second question is, do, do we, as a group, think that we shouldn't have? If I wanted to put a small cottage in the front of my, in front of my building, like, why wouldn't that be okay? I just, I, I'm confused. I have to be honest about, like, where this came from, because it doesn't feel like a cleanup item. It feels like an arbitrary decision being made, and we're supposed to go ahead and just accept it. So I'll start with N. I have P and R as well, but we can have a discussion on N if you'd like. Mr. Mayor, I don't know how to proceed, I just.
Well, let's, let's talk, but I, I don't know that I'm reading this the same way that you are. Could you perhaps summarize what N would do once again for us, please?
Right. Thank you, thank you, Mayor. So N is effectively applying for a detached ADU is applying the same standards of any other accessory structure to the ADU. So when the ADU ordinance was passed, I believe that was now in, in 2021, it didn't include that. So as it exists right now, you could put an ADU structure between your house and the street, which I know that there are a lot of opinions about what should be placed where in the Planning Division. And so the question is to why I would like to defer to Planning Manager Mark Agard.
Mr. Mark Agard, are you with us?
Mr. Mayor, unfortunately, he is not.
Oh, he's not, okay.
So for the, if I may, Mr. Mayor, for the explicit purposes of this, if what, if what we're doing is we're taking the standard that we have for any other accessory unit, that could be a garage, that could be, I don't know, a shed or whatever, and we're saying, hey, for everything else, you can't put that between the main house and the street. We're saying the same thing for accessory dwelling units, except that it's not the same thing, because we're trying to get people to have places to live. And it doesn't, that's not the same thing as, like, I want to put my third car there, or I want to put my lawnmower there. And so I, maybe I'm, anyway, it does, it probably, if, if we want to have a debate on it, we can. It just feels like a little bit, I don't know that I would treat an accessory dwelling unit as the same as any other accessory unit, I think is what I'm saying. It feels like a different use, and it feels like something we are actively trying to encourage people to build. And so artificially limiting that, I don't know, just for the sake of conformance doesn't necessarily mean, make sense to me, I guess, is my point.
Understood. Mr. Mark Agard, do you have rationale be, behind this, and we can talk about it then?
Yes, Mayor Bussey, Councilmember DeLisandro, thank you. The cleanup aspect of this is that there is other language in the code that says that accessory dwelling units are accessory structures. And then a section that says accessory structures are not allowed between the building and the street. However, that language was not in the ADU section. So there was some confusion that people looking at that ADU section may not be aware of that standard. However, if the council would prefer a situation where ADUs, unlike sheds or gazebos or such, could be allowed in the front yard between a principal building and the street, we could certainly do that. We would have to change the language in a few other spots, but we could certainly do that.
I, I guess my question, as I'm looking at what you have boxed there, is that what we're talking about here? I mean, we're talking about the location, maybe not be attached to, detached from, or internal. Accessory dwelling units are not permitted in conjunction with. It doesn't say where, you know, it doesn't say backyard, front yard in any of that.
That's the language that's missing, Mr. Mayor. That's what they're proposing to add.
Ah, now I understand. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. From, from that standpoint, I mean, the consistency that we're looking at here, I mean, you don't, I, I can envision a way, I can envision an instance where an accessory dwelling unit in the front yard then leads to a gazebo or a garden shed or, or a garage in the front yard. Just for, if, if it's good enough for a, an accessory dwelling unit, why can't I put my garage in the front yard? And so I would be very hesitant to, to go away from the standard that we have now requiring those folk, those, those structures to be in the backyard. Just my thoughts.
Well, I, I totally appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. I, my, my comment is not, I think that Mr. Mark Agard indicated that we, we've defined accessory dwelling units as accessory structure, and as accessory structure, we should enforce the code uniformly. Maybe my proposal is, maybe accessory dwelling units shouldn't be classified as accessory structures, because they don't perform the same function. So I can table that, but I probably will bring that back, because I really do want us to loosen up the ability for accessory dwelling units to be built in, in Bloomington. I, I can think of exact, a wonder, a one place, not that it will ever happen here, but our good friends over at, on Norman Ridge, there's this one, there's this one house that's literally, you know, a quarter of a mile up its lot. And there's just this open space, which is lovely, don't get me wrong. But if they wanted to put a cottage home there as an accessory dwelling unit, we're going to tell them that they can't. And I don't know, I just, seems like that's not necessarily what we want to do here. So in, in the interest of moving this along, I understand what the goal is here, uniformity, right? I would say that my comment would be, I, maybe we revisit whether or not accessory dwelling units should be classified as accessory structures. And that would, that, we can have that conversation separately. So is that okay?
Very, very good.
Very good, okay. So I'll table that one. On P, this is another one where I don't necessarily understand the application here. I, I get the, the standard. I have a neighbor, I have two neighbors, 86th Street and Dupont, 86th Street and Emerson. 86th Street and Dupont has had a side yard set, a side yard eight foot, six foot, eight foot fence on their side yard, which is the Dupont, the Dupont Street side, not the 86th Street side, the Dupont Street side, has had a fence there, privacy fence, since forever. Eight, 86 and, and Emerson wants to do the exact same thing, literally a block away, and can't because of stuff like this. And so, again, my, my question would be, on a corner lot, when you have two, two, effectively what we call two front yards, because we consider that for streets, is that appropriate? Because that's what we're, that's what we're doing here, is we're, we're, we're limiting people who are on corners from putting privacy fences in their, in their side yard, because we don't consider them having a side yard, which doesn't really make sense to me. So I will throw that one out there as a, as another consideration. And I have pictures I can show you of, like, that exact scenario, literally a block away on the exact same lot. Southeast corner of the intersection, exact same place, a block away from each other. One gets it, the other one doesn't, doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. So I would, I would love us, if we could think about side yards and, and opening up that definition to include literally the side yard, like whichever street is dominant, the other one is a side yard. The other one is not an also front yard, or something to that effect.
So I, I will say, I appreciate the, the comments. And I will say, the way, the way we've done these in the past, the way this basically works, if you want to pull one, that's why we letter them very specifically. If you want to pull those out, what, what we're trying to do is come to consensus on everything. And those that we don't, we pull out, we have this discussion, and then ultimately, we vote on it, whether or not you can get three others to agree with you regarding this, or whether or not we set it aside and continue the discussion, or whether or not we just move forward, you know?
Sure.
So that, that's, I, so what we could do with, even with the, the previous one, was it N?
N.
With N and P, I mean, we could do, we could have both of those pulled out, and then, and then whatever final one that you have, you said, I think.
R.
R.
NPR.
NPR, very good.
Yeah, I know, I know. It's the, it's the brain work in overtime.
Yep. But we could pull those out, we could have those discussions, and then ultimately vote on them one way or another.
So would you prefer to, for me to just make a motion to pull them out and talk about them separately first and let, get the other things passed?
Why don't we do that? That, that might make more sense. We can, we can be a little bit more efficient with all of this. Councilmember Lohman?
Sounds good.
So I just had one, one, just for, for clarity. It sounds like the P1 and the N1, well, I'm only going to add on to the, my interest to the N being pulled and the P1. But the L1, just a quick question around that. I know we have, you know, a structured form with that. Do other cities do that? Is there any risks at all with, with a letter being sent in that, you know, doesn't include all those details? You know what I mean? Where you, you send in a letter and one of them is missing, and somebody misses that, you know, from staff, and does that put us in a position at all? I'm just, I'm just concerned. I mean, if other cities do it, no, no big deal, there's no, no big problem with it. But I'm just concerned, you know, we must have had that for a reason, so.
Mayor, council member, I am, I'm not aware of the benchmark of other communities or if this has ever had any legal ramifications. So I defer to Planning Manager Mark Agard for more information on that.
Mr. Mark Agard?
Yeah, Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Lohman. We, we are aware of other cities that have moved away from, you know, the paper wet signatures. And Bloomington, we're certainly trying to do that too with electronic submittals. We believe this would just simplify our processes, allow things like email submittals of signatures. Oftentimes, the property owner may be remote. It's just hard to physically get their signature on the same document that they're submitting.
Oh, thank you for clarifying. I thought this had to do with, I didn't realize this was some kind of electronic updating. Okay, thank you for, for setting me straight. Okay, I got it, thank you. No problem with it. Leave it just as is, fine.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thanks, Mayor. Just a very quick clarification on M. Did I hear correctly that the cumulative would start with passage of this and not be retroactive? And did I also hear that our practice had been previously to treat it as cumulative?
Mayor, council member, yes, I believe those two things are both true at, at the same time. So it's, we've interpreted as cumulative. And I believe that when we received pushback on, on that interpretation, that we didn't have anything in code that we could point to. And so we, as, as we've talked within the division, we do recognize that by putting a date, it does then remove our ability to retroactively stay that. But we do, we, the, the consensus is that I've received from my supervisors that that is the direction that we wish to go for more clarity.
Okay. Just a quick thought on it. I appreciate the clarity. Can we give you the authority? Do we, do we have that power?
Ms. Manderstein?
Mayor members, when you're, when you're putting in a cumulative, we don't often put dates, we don't often draft dates into ordinances. But in something like this, where you have to, we have, you have to start sort of day one, you have to establish day one, and in this instance, you do, we're going to need a date. If you want us to come up with a different date, you could give us a different date tonight other than December 28th, 2023. But we need a, we need a day one.
Can day one be in the past?
Ms. Manderstein?
Mayor members, I believe, I know this isn't answering your question directly, but I believe the intent of December 28th is that that's the date of publication. Is that accurate? I believe it is. I've got a calendar right here. So that would be typically the effective date of something. If there is a specific date into the past, I guess the danger would be that the conditions of anything that's in the works are changing midstream. I don't know if we have anything in process right now that would be impacted by this. Maybe Glenn or Mallory know that.
I, I would defer to Glenn.
Ms. Mark Agard?
Mayor Bussey, council members, there have been additions over the years that if we could go retroactively, would be counted on, on different sites. Our ideal, if, if it's okay from a legal standpoint, would be to have that date be the original adoption date of the nonconformity standards. I don't have that date in front of me, but we could find that very quickly.
So want to, if, if there are questions, any additional questions? I, I, we got ahead of ourselves here. We got, we got into the discussion phase before our public hearing. And I apologize for that, where we, we got way ahead of ourselves. And so while, while staff is looking up answers to Councilmember Nelson's question, and while Councilmember DeLisandro is contemplating exactly where we want to go here, what I would like to do is open up the public hearing. And again, my apologies for getting into the discussion before we actually did that. So I will open up the public hearing right now on item 4.5. This is our public hearing regarding miscellaneous issues ordinances for 2023. Anyone in the chambers wishing to speak to item 4.5 this evening? Mr. Sable, is there anyone on the phone?
Mayor and council members, no one on the line.
Last call for anyone in the chambers? Counsel, no one on the cha, in the chambers coming forward, no one on the phone. I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.5.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Martin, to close the public hearing on item 4.5. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. So as we now dive into discussion, from what I've, what I've gathered from folks that we've, as we've been going so far, it sounds like the, the cleanup issues, items A through I, seem to be non-controversial. Is that correct? What I would like to do then is, I'd like to look for a motion to adopt ordinances A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, as included in the meeting packet, thereby amending Chapters 21 and 22 of the city code.
So moved, as stated.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Muah, to adopt the items as stated. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. So then, as we move to items J through R, what I have heard thus far is that we have NPR that folks want to talk about. Are there others that folks would like to pull out and talk about? Councilmember Nelson? M, so MNPR, very good. MNPR? Any others?
Mr. Mayor, I would actually, given what we did discuss on N, I could, I could, I could let that pass. I could let that pass for now, on N as in Nancy.
Okay, so throw N back?
Now we're just in NPR.
Now we're just at NPR. So we, as long as we consider that. Anything additional, folks, other than M, P, and R? If not, just to keep things moving along here, I would look for a motion to adopt the ordinances J, K, L, N, O, P, Q, and Q, as included in the meeting packet, thereby amending chapters 15, 19, 21, and appendix A of the city code.
So moved, as stated.
Mr. Mayor, actually, you mentioned P, but I would like to hold P.
Oh, did I mistake that? I apologize. Let me restate it. Ordinances J, K, L, N, O, Q. Very good.
So moved, as stated.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember DeLisandro, to adopt the ordinances as stated under item 4.5 in tonight's public hearing agenda. No further counsel discussion on the motion as stated. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. So now, doubling back, should we just do them in alphabetical order? I was always taught to use the alphabet whenever possible. So let's start with item M. Councilmember Nelson, you had questions specifically on this and about the, the active date.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. And I think I'd look to Glenn, if he's got that date, if he was able to find it.
Mr. Mark Gargard?
Yes, Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Nelson, looks like the section was originally adopted January 14th of 2008. However, there may be some legal concerns with going back in time, but I'll defer to legal on that.
Ms. Manderstein?
Yeah, Mayor members, 2008 was a long time ago. I'm a little bit concerned about the, the same issue that I raised earlier about on the fly, retroactive dates, and any potential sort of change conditions. People may have organized their proposals differently had they known that they were going to be able to count all the way back to 2008. And I wouldn't want to open us up to any unintended liability on that end of things. You could propose to continue this. We could do a little more research and come back. You've already done the public hearing. You could continue this part of it. You know, decision on this to the next meeting, or, I don't know, defer to Glenn and Mallory on what their preferences on how to move forward that way. Or you can take action on it tonight, or you can just do no action on it. Up to you, obviously, but-
Thank you. I, I think I agree, going back to 2008 might be a bit far. And I would hate to open us up to legal jeopardy. The, if the proposed active date is the date of publication, which is 12/28/23, I might suggest that. But I will leave it up to the person who pulled it out and-
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. And I guess, you know, part of my thought in terms of the jeopardy is, it seemed to me, from what I heard, is that it was common understanding that it was cumulative. So this isn't really a change from how staff has been operating, or what may have been told to people. It's a clarification, maybe we did have somebody ask a question about it. But, which is why I would prefer to go back to 28, which, you know, isn't that long ago. It's 15 years. No comment. So I, I just, I mean, if this is the way that staff and everyone has always assumed it was, just putting what everyone assumed it was into code, in my mind, is, is not that problematic. But there's probably things I'm missing.
Councilmember Lohman?
So my suggestion, I tend to agree with, with the mayor on this one. I'm, I'm supportive of what you're trying to do, but I would be, I would not feel comfortable doing this tonight. I might suggest if, you know, if we got a couple other folks who'd be willing to do it, you know, push this into another meeting, so that staff could, could do some research, see if there's any adverse effect.
Councilmember Muah?
Yes, I'd be supportive of that as well.
So supportive of, of continuing item M, and see if the, the staff could do a bit more research, and if there is no additional, or figure out what the, what the impact might be. Mr. Pabrogi?
Mr. Mayor and council members, why don't we see what happens with P, or was it R? We still have some discussion or question on. So let's see where we're at, and if council wants to continue on those, and maybe wrap it into one-
Good idea.
-motion. I, I would actually recommend, because we've tried to have a date certain when we continue items, is that we actually push it out to like February 12th, just because staff has items lined up here for the next month. So if we're adding something into the work plan, there isn't anything urgent about this. That gives them a little bit of time to do some good research and not have to necessarily bump some other stuff right away.
That makes sense. All right. So if we're good with that, if we can just kind of put this on the shelf for just a moment, and then move on to, I believe we have P and R that we still would like to, can, can talk about. Ms. Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, so again, the, the, I understand the intent of the cleanup. And I just struggle with the definition of a side or rear yard here, when we're talking about corner streets. It seems unduly, first off, it doesn't seem uniquely applied, as exemplified by my own neighborhood, where I have a block away, one has one, one doesn't. And then, secondly, it, it seems like a, I don't know, I just struggle with the idea that we would tell somebody, just simply because of, and this, like some kind of an arbitrary aesthetic who owns a corner house, that they can't put a privacy fence on their side yard. I, I don't know, I struggle with it from a, on a, like an individual rights basis here, in terms of personal property. And I don't necessarily, I don't know that we're making it better by, by enforcing this. I mean, and I under, again, I understand the amendment, and I understand what we're trying to clean up here. But I struggle with it on, I don't know, on personal rights grounds, if you will. Yeah.
Councilmember Lohman and Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you. Gosh, I'd love to use my, my, my house on this one, because if we did have a, have a, have a fence up there now, or a, or a brush up there now, I, I think that we would have a problem. So it'd be interesting to, to bring that up in a number of other, other places. But, so my question around this is, to be more specific, is around the clear view triangle, and how this deals with that. If you could help me to understand how this impacts, you know, that, you know, that, that, that clear view triangle piece? How's that supported? How's it not supported?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, so the, with the clear view triangle, in the areas that are 15 feet from either a driveway or a corner, you cannot build a fence that is greater than three feet in height. And so that, that is, is set, it would not be impacted by this, this ordinance change.
And so, you know, given that, isn't there a way to do that with a side yard? You know, to, to set that same type of standard, you know, as you, as you, as you work with it, with a side yard? Why, why do this instead of doing something more similar to that?
Um, the, so the, I believe the, the-
Or am I, am I not understanding this? You know, is that what this is?
Um, so this is, let me, let me see if I have a, let's see, a second slide that provides some examples. So currently, the, you, if you wanted to build a fence on the side, or an eight-foot side yard fence, can you see my cursor on the screen?
Absolutely.
You wouldn't put it between the structure and the house. It would extend from the house in it. And I believe a six-foot fence, or seven-foot fence is allowed without a permit, but an eight-foot fence, we require a permit. So there is a, so that's the standard as it exists right now. The, the issue is, is that this shifted with the prevailing setback, and, and that understanding. And so we tried to bring the fence setback, back into alignment with what it was before the prevailing setback was removed. And so the, in general, it was to keep the open design by the streets. So when people are, are walking in front of the streets, that they can kind of see on, on both sides, and to limit sight obstructions. As it, the, for the corner and the side lot, the, in this example, the, the clear view triangle would be extending in this corner. If, well, if this were a corner lot, then it would be the 15 feet along this corner, I think. Not sure if I answered your question.
No, I think you've, you've answered my question in the sense that, so that doesn't impact this. But is there a way to take that same standard and apply it all the way back, using that same methodology, as opposed to what has been proposed today?
Hmm. I would, I would have to defer to Planning Manager Mark Gargard to talk about the feasibility of doing something like that.
Yeah. I mean, I, I get what you're saying. So my yard, that would not impact that at all, because we're underneath that, that eight foot. But if I tried to put an eight-foot fence, and it's, it still wouldn't be in that clear view triangle. But with this, it would be, it would be impact. I could not do that. I could not bring it all the way up to eight feet. And I know that we've approved, on Xerxes, probably a couple of years ago, we approved one. We went, we approved a eight-foot fence for privacy reasons, because of, you know, something very similar to this. I, I just hate to see a bunch of folks come in just for that, just try to get approval, you know. So.
Mr. Mark Gargard, anything to add?
Sure. Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Lohman, I think, a couple of things going on here. One is the situation, say you have a 50-foot or 65-foot setback for a house. Back in May, with the single family and two-family code amendments, that prevailing setback standard was removed. So one of the kind of unintended consequences of that, that we did not anticipate, is that now theoretically, you could build a screen fence at 30 feet, even though your house is back at 50 feet or 65 feet. So the intention of this change tonight is to get rid of that unintended consequence of removing prevailing setback. But there is another issue at play, which Councilmember DeLisandro raised, which is the fact that Bloomington treats yards adjacent to a street, whether they're side or front, identically in terms of whether or not you can have a screen fence. Some cities do not do that. They would treat one of the, one of the, on a corner lot, one of the sides differently than the other. Bloomington chose not to back in 2009, when the fence standards were adopted. It's certainly something we can revisit, if that's desired. But it, it's not part of what's before you tonight.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. My question is sort of a tangent of Councilmember DeLisandro's, but with regards to the rear yard, and how that's impacted. I know some specific properties in my district that are, they have streets on three sides of them. And based on our fence standards, if they put a fence in what is their backyard, which is adjacent to a street, their backyard becomes like five feet, because it has to meet the building setbacks or something like that. So it's very difficult for them to meet that. I don't think that's the intent of what we're cleaning up here. But if there is going to be a larger conversation, I'd like to put that into the mix along with the side yard setback. So I don't mean to take up a lot of time on it tonight, if we're going to have continuing conversation.
Anyone else want to weigh in on P this evening? Item P. So, Councilmember DeLisandro?
Yeah.
Do, do we want to continue this? Do we want, do you have additional questions that would help clarify, or are you looking for more information?
No, I mean, like I said, I'm, I'm clear on what the, the, what the accommodation or the adjustment is here to, to clean up the language. I have more of a problem with the, with the, the, the code itself than I do the language. So if we are, if, if, I'll just, if, if the right thing to do is for me to get, to say to you all, yeah, I'm going to ask you all to think about this a little differently going forward, then that's a different conversation than what we're having at the moment. And I get that. I'm just not, I, I didn't want it to go by without us having a conversation that says, this is an area of, of opportunity for us to revisit, to give people a little bit more flexibility back in their, in their, and, and, and for the record, like, when you're talking about a house, and it's really clear where, like, by their address, and their front, you know, door and everything, which is the front yard and which is not, I struggle with the idea that we treat corner lots differently than we would my own yard, which is the second house in. That's all I'm saying. So all that having been said, we can, if, if everybody's okay, what I'll do when we get to organizational business is just bring this back and have a conversation about whether or not we want to consider addressing our, the code. That's, I'm going to do the same thing with accessory dwelling units. And then, just to cover off, if I may, Mr. Mayor, on R, again, don't understand why film isn't okay, especially in like medical or veterinary circumstances, like the idea that you can have complete coverage of, of a portion of your, of your window for the purposes of, of, of privacy, where blinds are never 100% covered, right? I just don't know why we're doing that to people. I, I, you know, the, so these things are coming up because of the cleanup. I won't prevent us from cleaning these up. But these are three speci, it's very interesting. These are very, three very specific things, that just in the last three months have been brought up to me explicitly by residents. So I'm bringing them up now to say, like, we have, I think we have some, some things we can do here to make this a little bit easier for folks. So all that having been said, I'm not going to, unless anybody else is enthusiastic like I am about tabling these, I will happily vote the changes in. But I'd like to bring these back for the actual discussion on code change.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. I would support either approach, Councilmember DeLisandro, if we approve him tonight, or if we table him and bring it back as a larger package. But I would support your effort to look at, actually, all of those have the same concerns about R as well, and the window screening. And I know, conversations earlier in the year with the city manager about a specific situation there. So, yeah.
If I may just interact with these, we can vote on them, and then we can, we can bring them back. In fact, we can have this conversation and organizational business about how we bring these back.
I think that's, that, that would be an acceptable solution, I think, to folks? Or, yes, why don't we?
Okay, do, do, in the interest of time, should we bundle them again?
Why don't you make the motion to bundle item M, item P, and item R, and we'll approve on those.
I will move to adopt ordinances M, P, and R, as included in the meeting packet, thereby amending chapters 15, 19, 21, and appendix A of the city code.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember DeLisandro, second by Councilmember Martin. Counsel discussion?
Was one of them, though, should we continue the one? Was that M, where we were waiting to get some specific dates back? That one, I think we should just continue. The other two, I think we should do exactly as the motion says we should do it.
So I'm amending them, you want to amend the motion to remove M from it?
That's what I'd like to do, yeah.
Second.
How much trouble are we getting in here now?
Amendment to the amendment, sir?
I think you're fine.
Okay.
We understand where you're do, what you're doing.
All right. So the motion has been amended to remove M. So let's just work on the, the motion right now, is to approve items P and R, ordinance P and R, as included in the meeting packet. Everybody comfortable with that?
Just briefly, Mayor, who the motion in the second are is?
Uh, Councilmember Martin. DeLisandro and Martin.
Okay.
Councilmember Lohman?
I just want to be clear that we're voting on the amendment, right, to remove M?
Nope. We are voting right now on-
We're doing hybrid parliamentary procedure.
Okay. I just want to, that's why I wanted to ask, because-
We're voting on P and R right now, and we will come back and vote on M.
Okay.
To, to continue that, or table-
All right. I just wanted to be clear, because that's not what I heard, so.
We did not. Where'd you, we're, we're-
We did M.
Okay. Got a motion by Councilmember DeLisandro, second by Councilmember Martin, to adopt ordinances P and R as included in the meeting packet. No further counsel discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Councilmember DeLisandro, item M.
So we are moving to continue item- So, we are moving to continue item M, uh, until, it sounded February eighteenth, you said?
Twelve.
Twelve, February twelfth.
Thank you.
Moving to continue item, uh, ordinance M to February twelfth.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember DeLisandro, second by Councilmember Loman, to continue item M until February twelfth, twenty twenty-four. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero.
Uh, summary publication then, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Okay. Um, I move to adopt resolution authorizing summary publication of all, all twenty twenty-three miscellaneous issue ordinances except M.
Motion by Councilmember DeLisandro, second by Councilmember Martin, for summary cul- summary publication as stated. No further council discussion on this. All of in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for the conversation. We will move on to our final item under, uh, four this evening, and this is a, uh, another adoption of the Active Transportation Action Plan. We will have a public comment opportunity on this one. Our Assistant Traffic Engineer, Amy Marone, is here to bring us through once again on the, uh, Active Transportation Plan, which we talked about not too recently, not, not too long ago, excuse me, very recently, not too long ago.
Correct. Thanks, thanks, Mr. Mayor and Council. Yeah, we were here two weeks ago to hear an overview of the Active Transportation Action Plan, and here tonight to request approval of the plan. So, um, so this is an overview, again, of the information that was presented at the December fourth meeting. And one more time, just for the listening public, um, you can find, get access to our plan at the Let's Talk page under BLM dot MN slash Let's Talk. Scroll down to the Public Works and Construction Projects, and then under the Active Transportation Plan link, you can click on that circle to have access to the full plan. So, what is active transportation? Active transportation is a way of getting around using human power, walking, biking, and rolling. And rolling refers to people using a wheelchair, stroller, scooter, or other assisted mobility device. Um, what is included in our Active Transportation Plan? So, it's a Bloomington-specific document that will define strategies and actions to guide the city in making walking and bicycling safer and more accessible for the people of all ages and abilities. And then foundational to our plan was, um, having equity infused throughout the goals and recommendations. So, there is a focus where people rely on walking and biking the most, focus on safety, specifically near busy roadways, and then a focus to invest where there's a lack of active transportation links, such as gaps and unconnected areas. Why is active transportation important in Bloomington? So, the city of Bloomington believes that walking, biking, and rolling are critical ways by which people of all ages and abilities reach the places they want to go, connect with the people they want to see, and improve their physical and mental health. The city also identifies active transportation as an essential tool for improving environmental health and reducing the city's carbon footprint. Here's a few examples of how, how each of those elements break out. So, in Bloomington, we feel that car ownership should not be a requirement for getting around safely in Bloomington. From the environmental perspective, Bloomington's Energy Active Transp-, uh, Energy Action Plan, twenty thirty-five goals, have a transportation element that suggests that we per-, that prescribes that we pursue all viable opportunities for promoting the elimination of vehicle emissions, including adding biking and pedestrian infrastructure. And then from an economy perspective, people walking and biking make more frequent trips to local amenities than people driving, so they're spending more money at local businesses. Um, active transportation also makes a great connection to our health and all policies goals, as it supports, um, active lifestyles and the healthy benefits, encourages social connection, and promotes opportunities for happiness. So, again, a summary of the plan. We went through in quite a bit of detail the la-, at the last meeting, so I, um, just mostly want to focus on a bit of the process that we used to go through the plan, and then we do have a list of the strategies that were recommended. So, um, creation of the plan started in November of twenty twenty-two and was, um, completed in August of twenty-three. The Active Transportation Planning Team, um, had representatives from across city staff, including Public Works, Public Health, Public Safety, Sustainability, Parks, Equity and Inclusion, and CoEd. Um, we also were developing this plan under assistance from a MnDOT Active Transportation Grant, and had, um, consulting assistance from Samantha Lorenz with Terra Soma and Meredith Benesch with HDR. We had a very, um, heavy public engagement strategy. So, since we were working from our existing alternative transportation plan, which identified a very solid system, um, ATP system throughout the city, um, one of the keys for this, uh, update in our plan was to have pub-, heavy public engagement and help to develop a shared vision. So, we worked with CoEd and did a lot of public outreach. Um, we had online comments, a comment map and survey, um, pop-up community conversations at the farmer's market, Creekside, South Town Apartments, and more, um, walking workshops, uh, school engagement session, bike focus group meeting, and a network mapping and action planning workshop that took place in the Civic, Civic Plaza Black Box Theater. So, um, through our public engagement with the online comments, we received over a hundred and forty-seven specific comments from residents and users of our system identifying locations where they either had a positive experience, or were they, mostly were they saw opportunities and really were requesting, um, specific focus. In our community walks, we, um, had a walk in each of the four different council districts. Um, this was really pretty eye-opening and I, a good opportunity to see the existing conditions, um, in the winter, and got a lot of good feedback through that process as well. Um, the overarching themes that we heard from the public engagement were pretty broad range, but they, they really ranged from, um, that people want to be on Old Shakopee Road, and that we really should focus some efforts along that corridor, all the way to, um, you know, focusing on our winter maintenance of existing facilities. So, again, without going into too much detail of the actual plan recommendations, um, we do have this priority network labeled that is a recommendation from the plan, identifies eighteen segments that are prioritized, prioritized, um, just again to note that they are numbered but not ranked. Here's a example of what each of the, each of the recommendations for these, um, segments looks like. Here's the full list of the eighteen different segments that are identified in the plan. And then we also have a list throughout the document of overarching recommendations that focus on three areas. So, street design and operations, walking and biking, and provide, um, documents or gu-, help, recommendations for prioritization of updating documents, um, and policies and practices throughout the city. So, we're getting close to the end of our path for acceptance of the plan. Um, we visited the Sustainability Commission, Planning Commission, um, in the city council two weeks ago, and tonight, um, we're requesting an opportunity for the public to be able to speak on the, speak to the plan as well. Um, some of the comments that we heard at the Planning Commission, they did vote to recommend that the city, city council accept the plan. Um, the feedback that we received from the Planning Commission was to focus on an improved active trans-, transit, transportation facilities along Old Shakopee Road, and to coordinate with Hennepin County, um, to take a look, an additional look at some of the missing connectivity, um, which are regional connection to the Fort Snelling area, uh, prioritize connections to and along Lyndale following the Ga-, Lyndale Gateway Plan, and to consider doing some demonstration projects, um, with community events such as Summer Fed or Farmer's Market. Sustainability Commission also provided a recommendation to the city council to accept the Active Transportation Action Plan in alignment with the Bloomington's, with Bloomington's climate goals, excuse me. Um, some of their comments said that they would like to see additional focus on developing a tree canopy to improve the usefulness of the active transportation facilities in the summer. That is something that is referenced in the plan, but they're just, um, we're requesting that that have some additional prioritization, and to build in a timeline to, um, to review and update the plan in the future. Um, their letter of recommendation was included in your packet. And then, again, at the meeting two weeks ago, some of the comments that we did hear from the city council, um, were to make sure that we're including wayfinding and publicly sharing information about the existing and, um, rollout of new facilities, to focus on destinations in the community, and remember that this is not just a recreational plan, but it really is a, a transportation plan, and to look for measurable outcomes, including facility usage. Okay, so, that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions, and again, we do request that this is, um, available for public comments.
Very good. Thank you so much. Council, as I said, we had this conversation, a pretty lengthy conversation just a couple of weeks ago. Any additional questions, Ms. Marone, in the last couple of weeks? If not, uh, we did want to make sure that we had an opportunity for, uh, some public comments. Uh, so, I will open now a public comment opportunity on item four point six. This is regarding our Active Transportation Action Plan adoption. Anyone in the council chambers wish to, uh, publicly comment about item four point six? Anyone on the phone?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, no one on the line.
No one on the line. We're, uh, last chance for anybody here in the council chambers. No one coming forward, so I will close the public comment opportunity on item four point six, our Active Transportation Action Plan adoption. Council, questions on this, or, um, anything to add after our discussion of just a couple of weeks ago on this? Councilmember Muah.
Thank you, Mayor. I think mine is just more of a comment. Um, I just want to say how excited I'm, I am about this. Uh, my, my in-laws grew up here, and when I listen to my father-in-law's stories of how he could bike from Lyndale to West Bush Lake without being scared of being run over by cars, this gets me really excited. You know, it's not the seventies, Bloomington's fully built out now, but when I think about when my kids grow up and they're riding their bikes by themselves, I want to see them do that. And so I'm very excited to see this happening, and that we're actively pursuing options to allow people to freely move within our community. So, I'm very, very happy that we've done this work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Muah. Councilmember DeLisandro.
Uh, I second that. I, the only recommendation I'd make over and above anything that we've talked about before is just that we, um, we, we make sure that as part of our, um, as part of our, um, uh, outcome, uh, approach, that we think about, you know, um, being able to measure, um, you know, the number of, like, how many more miles of trail do we have, and how much of that is contiguous, and, you know, what is the feedback we're getting from those new things, et cetera, et cetera. So, I don't know if there's a place for it in our, um, you know, in our dashboards, uh, but I think it's a big enough of a, of a, of a deal, and, um, that it's worth us doing some, you know, tracking along sustainability grounds on, on, you know, in terms of emissions reduction, uh, or, you know, activity level, public health, whatever, whatever measurements we want to use. Um, I'd love to see a piece of the dashboard of, for our strategic planning dedicated to some of the outcomes associated with this. I think it's a really big deal. So, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other comments? Councilmember Loman?
I, I'm ready to move it. I got one brief comment. Uh, I, I appreciate the fact that it's a living, living document. And so, I think you know I've, I've made my comments, and so I'm gonna look forward as we move forward that I can kind of execute in a living document, uh, on some stuff, so.
You're good.
But if we're ready to go, I'm, I'm happy to move it.
I don't see any other hands going up. Councilmember Loman?
I'm going to adopt a Active Transportation Action Plan.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Muah, to adopt the Active Transportation Act, Action Plan. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good work on this. This is a, a big, a, a big effort, I know, and it involved a lot of staff members, so I appreciate, uh, your leadership on this, and I appreciate your herding all those cats to bring it all together, and I appreciate everybody walking around in the winter to figure out the best way to, to make it all work. So, well done. Thank you so much. Yep. We will move on now to our organizational business, uh, and our first item under organizational business is item five point one, is the City Manager Performance Evaluation Summary and Employment Agreement. And as you all know, and I, I'm sure the members of the public know, uh, the city council has exactly one employee, and that's the city manager. There's an employment agreement between the city and the city manager that defines the terms and the conditions of employment, and in that employment agreement, uh, both parties agree that a performance evaluation process is, uh, is appropriate. On Monday, December eleventh, the city held a closed session with city manager Jamie Verbrughe for the purpose of conducting the city manager's annual performance evaluation. Mr. Verbrughe was evaluated in the areas of leading, managing, and developing staff, financial management through effective and efficient service delivery, focus on strategic priorities, meaningful and inclusive resident involvement, innovation, and appropriate risk-taking, and relationship with the city council. The council agreed that Mr. Verbrughe has excelled in the area of focusing on strategic priorities. We also had consensus that Mr. Verbrughe is regularly meeting and exceeding expectations in the areas of innovation and in maintaining open and trusting relationships with the city council. We also agree that we'd like to see Mr. Verbrughe continue to be more strategic in communicating city issues to the public and media, that we'd like to have a better sense of how he is leading organizational development efforts, and that we'd like to see continued focus when preparing budgets on evaluating the services we provide and doing so in the most cost-effective way possible. Uh, the more specific results of the performance evaluation were these. The city council found that the city manager's performance met the expectations of the city council. The city council agreed to extend the city manager's contract from January one, twenty twenty-four, to December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. The city council agreed to set the city manager's compensation at an annual base salary of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and the city council agreed to contribute a twenty-five thousand dollar payment to the deferred compensation plan of the city manager's choice. That is the general summary of our closed meeting session with the city manager, uh, with the, uh, with the intention of, uh, conducting a annual performance evaluation. Council, uh, unless there are specific questions about what I mentioned, without, uh, getting into too much and, and making sure that we don't violate that closed meeting that we did have, if there are specific questions or additions to what we had talked about, uh, I'd, I'd appreciate those now. Um, or, uh, Mr. Verbrughe, if there's anything else you would like to add?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, and, and just for anybody in the communities watching, I just want to state again what a, uh, privilege it is to have this, uh, position. Um, this is frankly one of the most dynamic environments in, uh, Minnesota for any city, and, uh, I am grateful to have the opportunity to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Loman?
Mayor, I just want to thank you, uh, for organizing, uh, uh, the effort. It does take a little bit of extra work, uh, to do that, uh, coaxing some city council members, uh, to get their stuff in on time. Won't point anybody out. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Council, seeing no more comments, I will move to approve an employment agreement between the city manager and the city of Bloomington. We have a motion and a second by Councilmember DeLisandro to approve an employment agreement between the city manager and the city of Bloomington. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Congratulations, you're-
Thank you.
One more year. Very good.
At least.
At least, yes.
Until next year.
Until next year. Moving on to item five point two, our final, uh, item of this evening, and that is our city council policy and issue update. And I will kick it off with just a couple of things here very quickly. First of all, just a recap of our, our twenty-sixth listing session of twenty twenty-three, and we had one speaker tonight, Brent Weems. Um, Brent, I think he, he's in the trades. I think he said he was a plumber, did he? And the, the company issued truck that he is asked to bring home and then go to work using, uh, is officially too large to park in his driveway, and too large by city code and city requirements in terms of what you can park in your driveway. Uh, and Brent asked us if there was anything that we could do about it, or if there was an appeal process and so on. So, we had a good discussion with Brent. We asked our, uh, city attorney to look into the specifics around it and see exactly what might be done. Uh, did point out to Brent that officially there is no appeal process, but it is something we could consider, because we all know that since the pandemic, uh, work patterns have changed significantly in a number of different industries, and it might be something that we want, want to look at and, uh, evaluate, um, a bit differently in the work realities of twenty twenty-four in just a few days, uh, as opposed to twenty nineteen- in the work realities of 2024, in just a few days, as opposed to 2019 or 2020. So the world has changed and maybe we need to change along with it. So we'll take a look at that. As I mentioned, we've had 26 listening sessions. And with Mr. Weems, who he had not heard from before, we've had a total of 54 total speakers and 37 unique speakers. And more than half of those speakers hadn't spoke before us in the past. And so I think just in terms of what we set out to accomplish with our listening session as opposed to the public comment period here in the, in the council chambers, I would say it's, it has been a success. We, at the end of our first year last year, we had written into the idea that we, I was going to report out and we were going to kind of vote on it. And I wasn't sure if I needed to report out again this year. I thought it was a good idea just because it shows the, the, the impact that this has had, the number of people that have come forward, the, the different types of conversations that we've had with people that we know and that we don't know. And I think it's been definitely a worthwhile thing. I don't see any reason to change unless I see a lot of shaking heads that we should be changing this in some way. I think it's working very well and I'd like to continue with the current situation. The current setup that we have is listening sessions. And I think it's, it's just been as successful as we hoped it would be when we, we made the change a couple of years ago now. Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. I always like to push for change, so I think we, we've, you know, maybe we're not there yet. But, you know, you know, in terms of, of, and I'm not saying every single time we need to change it, but I wonder if, 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 well, once a quarter or once a year, we try a different time to have a listening session to kind of open that up, to try it a little bit differently. Maybe even consider moving when we comment about those listening sessions to the front end of the meeting. I don't know how that works, but just want to kind of challenge us to, to always be trying to be innovative around that, that particular idea. It is working well. I do like it. But I think we ought to challenge that, you know, we did it for so many years the way it was before. And we shouldn't be stuck in old practices, you know, of, of doing it. But I do like we, and I, I want to thank you also for bringing back a report each year, if you do that, with that. But I would, would want to challenge you, or challenges body too, to, to continue to find ways to be innovative with the processes. And it doesn't have to be every time, but maybe once, try something different.
Thank you, council member. Appreciate that. Any other comments on that, council? Mr. Verbrugge?
No additional comments, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Martin?
Oh, okay. Oh, never mind. I didn't, I thought you meant on that specific topic.
No, 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 no. I'm, I'm calling on Councilmember Martin.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah.
Well, that's, I can go off on the listening session if you want. I got material. Well, as, as is the annual tradition, I would love to, to move forward some recognition for staff and the incredible work that, that I was so excited to talk about earlier in the meeting. And I know we've provided, I think it's a paid half-day holiday on Friday, the 22nd. And I know, Mr. Verbrugge, if you have some more context around that?
Mr. Mayor and council members, as always, staff appreciates council's gratitude and demonstrating that gratitude with some amount of holiday leave time because Christmas is on Monday and that's, that's the official recognition of the holiday. That's the day that our, all of our collective bargaining units and all the employee handbooks identifies day off here. Friday, we will be open for business. If council agrees to extend four hours of leave for employees, we'll close city offices at noon on Friday. And vital services will continue. Public safety and utilities will continue to operate. But we will notify the community starting right away tomorrow just to provide a heads up that the city offices will only be open for a half-day if council moves forward. And thank you.
So Councilmember Martin has brought forward the proposal to grant four day, four hours, four hours of vacation time on, on Friday of, Friday, the 22nd. And officially, I, I heard that as a motion. Did I hear that, Councilmember Martin?
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Carter. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor of that, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. So congratulations, staff, once again, on an incredibly successful year over the course of the past 12 months here in the city of Bloomington. Yes, Mr. Rui, this is, what, how did you define this? The, the most dynamic?
Environment?
Environment, yes. That's kind of putting it mildly. And appreciate all the work that our staff puts into this day in and day out throughout the year under, under a lot of pressure sometimes, under the public scrutiny, under the scrutiny of this council, and they do it very, very well every time. So happy holidays to all of our staff and enjoy the weekend and enjoy the time with your family. So very happy that we're able to do that. Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you. I wanted, right off the bat, just, I know we had talked earlier about bringing a, an ordinance back or language for that. So I wanted to move the staff bring back language for ordinance that addresses wage theft and other unfair labor practices.
So we can do this as a, a motion and an acceptance, or as we typically do in this. If we can get four nodding heads or five nodding heads, I think it's, it's as official as, as an official motion. But I think we talked about this earlier and I think we are directing staff. And I think we have agreement. Anybody in disagreement? I think we are in agreement that we would like staff to look into very specific wage theft ordinance and other ordinances that we can use to protect workers.
Staff's understanding, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to formalize it so that there's some, and then secondary things I wanted to mention. I'm going to miss you, Patrick. I didn't mention it earlier because I already had made my statements long ago. So I didn't want to, you know, draw on and on. That's something I do a lot. So, but I'll miss you and good luck. Maybe we'll see you back again.
Councilmember DeLaSandro?
So apologies, because I know I'm holding, I'm going to get it done in two minutes. A problem. What, I had one idea that I wanted to throw out here. One of the things I've noticed in the course of the last year is that we have our public comment opportunities oftentimes on the last day that we are reviewing something. And it feels a little bit like people can come make comments, but we can't do anything with those comments because we're going to vote the, like, right away on the thing. And so I was just kind of curious if, as we have these long things, and the active transportation is an example of that, as we have these kind of long projects that take several months to, to gel, I'm wondering if the chance for those public comment opportunities to be earlier on so that we can actually act, like, take action on some of the feedback that we get in those might be a better plan for us? So I throw that out there just as we think about how our work plans might work, that we can do something like that. Just because, you know, as a, as a, as a way to kind of get that feedback incorporated into what we might then end up voting on.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I would just ask for clarification because I think like the example you gave, there was a lot of public input and feedback incorporated into it. And then oftentimes when we have public hearings and we get feedback and we need to go, like, we go back and forth, right? Like the zoning requirements. Like we had an open, we had the public comment, but then we extended and like we kept having conversations. And so I guess I don't, I don't, I guess I don't, I'm just asking.
Yeah, that, that actually is a great example. And, and actually, it, it, it prob, it might end up proving my point in the sense that like, we added public comment periods.
Which we can do.
On purpose.
Yeah.
Earlier on in the process because we knew it was building to a contention. And so like, that actually was useful because then we could actually take action on those things. And so that, that was my only comment. Like, if, if these public comment opportunities, if we can give them earlier on. Now, you're right, public engagement, whether public engagement or, and public comment opportunities are the same or different things, that's a good question. I see them as different in the sense that there's a, like, we had one today where we had a public comment opportunity on this active transportation plan. But if we'd have heard anything that we wanted to take action on, what would we have done at that point?
I think we would have just postponed the vote, right? Like, we would have extended it.
Would, would we have?
We could have. It would have been within our, so I don't, I guess I don't know what the change would be because we can already do that.
The change would be that instead of pushing back the deadline for staff on the last day, we actually can do that upfront. That's all. Yeah.
Mr. Verbrugge?
Hey, Mr. Mayor and council members, Councilmember DeLaSandro. There are some cities where they will have a first reading and a second reading and often will not act on something if, if it is subject of a public hearing until a subsequent meeting. That has the effect of delaying a process. And so especially in like land use processes where we have a finite period of time, we have to build that extra couple of weeks into the schedule. I think it's entirely up to council how you want to do this. I, I would agree with Councilmember Carter is most of the things that are of high public interest have significant engagement throughout the process. And I understand that, you know, we maybe want to get more input when we have the bird fully baked, right? So I, I think it's just a matter for council to direct us how you want to proceed, knowing that doing so just extends the process a little bit.
Yeah, my goal is not to extend the process in the sense that my, my goal is if we did this earlier on, we wouldn't find ourselves at the last possible day going, oh, I think we need to extend this or table this or whenever. So that's, that, if that doesn't, if it, if it doesn't end up working that way, then I would, I would not worry about it. So we can, we can look into it as we see our work plans gel throughout the year. But if, 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 if that was, if there are places like that, it, what I, what I don't want to do is I don't want to, to look disingenuous that we're saying, well, we had a public comment period, but, but that public comment period happened so far at the end of the process and we didn't do anything with anything we heard and we just voted anyway, that it doesn't seem like people would, would walk away from that feeling like they actually could influence the outcome. And if our goal is to try to help people influence the outcome, then I would like to try to get that information earlier on in the process. But.
And I guess I, my takeaway was similar to Councilmember Carter. There's been a lot of public comment. There's been a lot of public engagement opportunities associated with this. I mean, I guess if we had, perhaps we should have had it Monday, two weeks ago when we, when we first heard it. And then even just that two-week time period. So there are ways we could look at it. But, and I, I, I see what you're saying that, yeah, it maybe looks like window dressing when we have a public comment period at 10 o'clock, right before we approve it, that kind of thing. But at the same time, the, the fact that no one was here and the fact that on, on many things, we, we don't hear a lot of public comment, that tells me that our staff is doing a good job doing, getting some of that information, getting some of that public engagement work done ahead of time. And the fact that a lot of folks are, are good with the work that's being done. I don't, I don't know.
Very fair, very fair. Well, we can look at it on a case-by-case basis. If, if, as we go through 2024, I see something where I'm like, there's a good example of what I was talking about, we'll bring it up.
Please.
Fair enough. Okay, so very quickly, the three things that we talked about earlier on that I'd love to see us actually consider. I, I don't know if accessory dwelling units should be classified as accessory structures because I think they have a very, very specific use. And people live in them versus accessory structures, as we've defined them, are not places where people live. And so if we could think about potentially decoupling the notion of ADUs from other types of accessory structures so we can hone in on the things that we want to do with ADUs that will truly move the needle in getting that infill done, I think that would be a smart idea. So I'd love to propose that. On, on the film stuff, I, I just don't understand why we care what people put on their windows. I, I mean, I understand there's gaudiness issues and other things like that. But like, if, if, if I'm, so as an example, I'm, I go to the good folks at Nova Vet Clinic and they went through hell because they have rooms where people are euthanizing their pets. And it's not, in their opinion, a secure thing, right? They can't, because it's not filmed. It was blinds. And then those blinds are open, kind of, sort of, because they are moving with the air in the room or whatever. And, you know, it doesn't feel like an environment where there's privacy and, and somebody could, you know, do that very solemn activity without feeling like they might be being watched or whatever. You know, those are the kinds of like medical uses, veterinary uses, other places like that where I think we could make exceptions, but I guess I'm wondering why we care. And so I'd love to have us, if somebody could bring back to us, like, here's the history of why we don't allow film on, on, you know, windows. So we could look at that. That would be great. I don't know if, Councilmember Nelson, you've said you have, like, thought about this already as well. I, I don't know if you have anything else to add to that, but.
I have three dogs. We go to Nova Pet Clinic.
Yeah, they're great. Dr. Rachel. Yes.
Mr. Verbrugge, something to add to that?
Mr. Mayor and council members, consultation with our planning manager. What we would propose is bringing these items back for additional discussion on the same February 12 agenda that we continued the other item to. We will have the planning commission and planning department work plan presented to the city council on January 8. So you'll get to see the, you know, how things fit into the full scope of things. But I think staff has a good feel from the conversation that occurred earlier. And what we'll do is bring each of those items back with the, the history of, you know, what the ordinance is trying to accomplish, issues that we've experienced with those particular ordinances, and maybe some options that the council could consider for discussion.
So.
Councilmember Carter?
I was just going to say, related to the ADUs, I, I like how you framed it up in terms of what will come back to council because I think you are highlighting one specific example in the ADU policy that might make it more challenging for people to be able to build an ADU. But I'd be curious, since it's been a decent amount of time since we passed the ADU standards, you know, have we seen ADUs built? And if not, what are some of the barriers that people who are interested, what are they running into? And are there other opportunities? So if we're going to go back to the policy, like, let's look at it more holistically and see if there are broader challenges. But also, like, the very specific example that we had tonight, that might be making it harder.
Yeah, I thank you, Councilmember Carter. I agree with that completely. I know, for example, there's another one where if you're, you have, we have, and I don't know if this is the structure thing or the ADU specific thing, but like, or the, yeah, accessory structure versus ADU, but like, we have some, we have some measurement requirements and, you know, size percentages and all that kind of stuff that are also causing other people problems. So it's probably worth looking at holistically. The last thing I was going to mention is just on the fence thing. So we could throw that into the February 12 discussion. I just, I can't for the life of me understand why these circumstances are what they are. So education on my end about like, why we have that in the first place so that we might change it would be great. So thank you for considering those things. It's so funny that they just happened to be part of the miscellaneous discussion tonight. And they have been explicitly resident engagement questions for me over the last three to six months, so. Timely. The last thing I wanted to mention is just that I did have the opportunity to go to the National Legal Cities City Summit in Atlanta. I didn't get the chance to talk about this the last time because we worked overtime and it wasn't super relevant. But I did want to, you know, there are a lot of highlights to, to call out there. There's some incredible work being done on a number of issues that are relevant to, to Bloomington. You know, whether that's electrification of, of the transportation division grid and, and everything. Great discussion I, we had with, with other folks in, around the country. I think there were something like 8,500 of us or something. There was a very big conference that, you know, we got the chance to talk about all kinds of really interesting things. But I, I had a really engaging discussion with folks about, man, I don't want to call it manufactured housing, but there's some really great options in the world of like, bringing in, you know, kind of that kind of housing and, and doing really cool things with our, you know, city-owned properties. So that, that's one thing, something that I had on my mind when I thought about the ADU thing, in fact, because they're really cool. The other thing that, there's a really interesting conversation in fire safety, which sounds like a really strange thing, about electric bicycles because of the lithium ion batteries and charging them in people's homes. And so I don't know if Chief Seal and others have dealt with that yet. But as we think about electrification of, of our, of our transportation and people using EV bikes, charging them inside, you know, leads to lithium ion fires in some cases. And so there's some standards around that that we might want to consider adopting for the purposes of our multi-unit housing. It's, it's a, I know it so, sounds so strange, but it's, it's a problem for people everywhere because there isn't an adoption of like, fire standards on that right now. So something else to think about. The last thing I will say is Jose Andres was there as one of the keynote speakers. He, if you don't know who he is, he runs World Central Kitchen, incredible nonprofit that goes into really, really difficult areas and feeds people. And it was such an honor to be part of the Minnesota contingent because he made the comment of like, why he doesn't understand why feeding kids lunch is, is a thing that people argue about. And the whole Minnesota contingent was able to stand up and go, we do, and it was really awesome. So thanks again to the state legislature for passing that. That was a big deal. And we are first in the nation, and I think a lot of people want to talk to us about how to do that there. I know that's not a local thing, but it does affect our Bloomington kids. And it meant a lot to be able to stand up and, and, and high-five ourselves on that note, which, you know, is important. So thank you for the time. Appreciate it.
And thanks for representing Bloomington with the National Law Cities. Well done.
Really, oh, by the way, they're in their 100th year this coming year. So there's a lot of extra activities that will happen. I did get a T-shirt. It's very exciting to say 100 years of city love or whatever it is. I don't know. But it'll be in Tampa next time, so. I did get a T-shirt. It's very exciting to say one hundred years of city love or whatever it is, I don't know, but it'll be in Tampa next time, so.
Good. Did you get a chance to meet Clarence Anthony?
I have, I've, I've met him before, yes, and, and, and he was there, and he was having a blast.
I'm sure he was.
Yeah.
No doubt in my mind about that.
Yeah.
Counsel, anything else this evening? Councilmember Loman and then councilmember Muah.
Just real quick, if the manager, I meant to mention this earlier, could mention something about the trees, because I've gotten a number of emails on a hundred and sixth street, hundred and fourth, I'm hopeful I'm going to take in your thunder on that, but.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, councilmember Loman, councilmember Muah. City did receive quite a bit of questions from residents this weekend and today. After a obvious cutting of a significant number of trees in Central Park, in the area of about a hundred and sixth and Humboldt, this is part of a natural resource woodland restoration project that is being done by Hennepin County. We're a partner in that project, but Hennepin County actually hired the contractor and is coordinating the project. And the whole purpose of that is to open it, open that area back up to what is a natural woodland state. And I think some folks were concerned because they saw a significant amount of what was red cedar that had been cut, and it's a large wood that is attractive, but it's not native to the particular area, and so what it has done over the course of many decades is actually provide too much cover that keeps sun from getting in. It causes soil erosion and a lot of other change in the natural state. So the whole purpose of the natural woodland restoration project is to do exactly what, what the words say, right, is try to restore it to its, its natural state, which has a number of other trees that provide more sun accessibility into the area and is better for the, the, the environment and the ecology in that area. Now, the thing that I will say is that we typically post signage when we're doing a project like that, and, and we missed doing that this time, and it was just a coordination mistake between us and Hennepin County, since they were the ones that are leading the project. And we got signs out there today, and we'll endeavor not to let that happen again.
Thank you for the update. Councilmember Muah?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, that was one of my questions, and another thing that I was just thinking about today as we were going through the miscellaneous issues that I just threw out there. I, I wonder if there's a way or opportunity for us to review our ordinances and policies in general as they age. Maybe when an ordinance hits thirty years or forty years, there's an automatic review to see if it's still relevant, because things that were relevant to nineteen eighty-three are, might not be relevant today, and so putting that out there as we start looking at how we streamline things, how we make sure that we're working more efficiently, to make sure that our ordinances are up to date and current and serving the current needs into the future.
Good suggestion, councilmember. Appreciate that. Thanks. Is there anything else, counsel? If not, councilmember Martin, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Got a motion and a second to adjourn? No further council discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thanks much, counsel. Good discussions tonight. Thanks to everybody who is here and the, and the discussions that took place within the folk, within the council chambers and everybody who watched online. And thank you, councilmember Martin. Enjoy.